Good evening, folks. It is Wednesday, June 5th, 2024, and we are here for the monthly voting meeting of the Athens-Clark County Mayor and Commission. We're going to begin by asking Clerk Spratlin to call the roll for us.
Davenport?
Here.
Blaine?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Wright?
Present.
Fisher?
Here.
Hul?
Here.
Kell Peffer?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Thornton?
Here.
And Hamby?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, I need to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to add suspension of rules procedure related to regular meetings being required to convene in City Hall as Agenda Item A1. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Fisher. I've got a second from Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, hearing none, we are operating under suspension of rules. With respect to Agenda Item A1, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the suspension of rules or procedure related to regular meetings being required to convene in City Hall. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Wright and I have a second from Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All right, hearing none. All right, we have approved our ability to meet here, and we thank Clark County School District for opening their space to us. We anticipate we will be back in City Hall on July 16th. All right, I also have to read an additional request to amend the agenda. I'm going to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to add the following two items to the agenda under New Business, which are necessary for consideration at this evening's meeting. The first of those items is a resolution of the Commission of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, to approve an official response to the Attorney General's Office and for other purposes. That will be the 45th item on the agenda, and the 46th item will be a resolution of the Commission of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a resignation agreement and general release related to Blaine Williams' resignation from appointment as manager of the unified government of Athens-Clark County. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to add those two new items to New Business?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Thornton, and I have a second from Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, we will hear those items at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. I also need a motion for approval of the minutes of meetings of Tuesday, May 7th, Thursday, May 9th, Tuesday, May 14th, Wednesday, May 22nd, Wednesday, May 30th, and non-voting meetings of May 2nd, May 9th, May 14th, and May 23rd. Do I hear such a motion? All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Taylor and a second from Commissioner Davenport. All in favor of approval of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications this evening?
No, we have none tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, for members of the public, there are going to be several opportunities for public input. There will be a public input opportunity on the consent agenda. There will be a public input hearing for our taxpayer bill of rights hearing. There then will be individual opportunities for input on our planning and zoning items. There will be an opportunity for public input on old and new business, and then we'll have an opportunity for general public input for items not on tonight's agenda at the conclusion of tonight's meetings, except for planning and zoning, which I'll get to in a moment. Those public input opportunities are for three minutes. There's a light in front of Clerk Spratlin. It will turn green when your time to speak begins. It will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and it will be red when your time has come to a close, and I will thank you for your time with us tonight. First order of business that I need to do is to ask, is there any commissioner who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Commissioner Hamby?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Numbers five and six, please.
Is there any other item a commissioner would like to remove from consent? All right, thank you, commissioners. All right, so for members of the public, now is the time when there's the opportunity to comment on the consent agenda items, and so those are one through 17 with the exception of five and six. One through 17 with the exception of five and six. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to any of those items? And just give us your name and place of residence for the record. You may begin speaking.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Emily Alger, and I live 5540 High Shells Road in Bishop. I'm the president of the Professional Firefighters of Athens-Clark County, and I was just coming here to say thank you for putting us on the cassette agenda, and then also to let you know that y'all are all cordially invited to Station, Fire Station 1 tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. for hopefully a ceremonial signing. So we just want to extend our heartfelt gratitude to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alger. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak to items on the consent agenda? Again, those are items one through 17 with the exception of five and six. All right, seeing none, I will ask for a motion from a member of the commission for approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Hul and a second from Commissioner Davenport. Attorney Drake, can you read the ordinances?
Yes, Mayor. There are six ordinances on the consent agenda. Numbers one, two, three, four, five, and six are ordinances. Agenda Item 1, an ordinance for the establishment of an always stop at the intersection of Nellie B. Avenue, Gressom Street, and Fairview Street and for other purposes. Agenda Item Number 2, an ordinance to amend the FY 2025 operating and capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding as awarded from the National Trust for Restored Preservation Grants for expenses related to the preservation activities for the Morton Building and for other purposes. Agenda Item Number 3, an ordinance to amend the FY 2024 annual operating and capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding for the engineering and construction of additional landfill disposal space and for other purposes. Agenda Item Number 4, an ordinance to amend the FY 2024 annual operating capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded to the Transportation and Public Works Department from the Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOT 2024 Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, L-MIG, surplus for live strain pipe replacement, planning, and design services and for other purposes. Agenda Item Number 5...
And five and six, Attorney Drake, we're going to take up on our new business.
Oh, you took those off. Sorry, Mayor.
All right, thank you for reading those ordinances. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, those agenda items are approved with a single vote. All right, we're going to move on to the taxpayer bill of rights hearing on our FY 25 budget as required by the taxpayer bill of rights passed by the General Assembly in 1999. Rules of public input are the same for this item, so if anybody would like to speak to the budget, now is that time.
Larry Jordan, Athens, Georgia. I'm here to address excessive government spending by the commission and the mayor. I'll review, be reviewing the last two years' budget highlights and proposed FY 25 budget. I must say that the mayor's proposed budget is unacceptable to me. Why, Mr. Mayor, do you constantly submit an annual budget that increases millions of dollars each subsequent year over year? I own a home, and my property taxes have skyrocketed. Yes, you didn't cut the mortgage rate, but you're still getting a lot more income just because of the, of the home values. I have a personal budget I have to live by and only wish I could get additional funding by taxing others like you do. If it wasn't for the law, you really don't want to hear our input. You just want to do a budget and run with it and spend our money. Some of the concerns, FY 23, since FY 23, you sent more than $45 million, $200,000 more than the FY 22 budget. Some of that is needed to increase costs such as benefits, but $45.2 million more? Unacceptable. Just tax and spend at the local level is what we have. Housing and development alone has increased over $3 million in the last three years. Sanctuary city-like, sanctuary-like city welcoming illegal aliens from all over the world along with your, with other counties dropping off their homeless here, which, by the way, breaks state law. Those counties know this liberal county will take care of them instead of using their own tax dollars for their own homeless population. Property tax revenue has increased 21.4 million since FY 23 budget. How about cutting mortgage rate and spending less on housing and development judicial expenses for starters in FY 25? We need a wholesale change of a number of commissioners on this seat, in this body, and the mayor, but that's difficult because of the overwhelming number of uninformed voters who must like the status quo no matter how bad it is here. Those same voters are the reason we have the worst district attorney of all 159 counties in the state of Georgia. Lastly, why do you think it's acceptable to allow boundless growth in the smallest physical state or physical county in the state of Georgia? These are all double-digit increases year to year, keep growing. As I said, $45 million increase in your budget from just three years ago. Property tax increases 21.4 million, sales tax revenue increases 11.6. Expenses have significantly increased. Housing and development has increased over $3 million in the last three years. For what? Is it all the homeless people we're trying to house from other counties that you guys have opened your arms to in the county? Sanctuary-type policies welcoming all illegal aliens to our county is not the answer. General government expense exploded between FY 23 and FY 24 of $10.5 million alone. Again, rein in government spending. FY judicial had a 13.8% budget increase of 1.8 million. For what?
Thank you for joining us tonight, Mr. Jordan. I appreciate it very much.
No worries, and thank you for three minutes versus two last time.
Would anyone else like to speak to the FY 25 budget? Good evening, just to give your name and place of residence.
Good afternoon. Al Lewis, just to speak to the budget, there were appropriate increases for housing, which doesn't actually cover the increased costs of taking care of our neighbors, especially as things go up. However, I would like to point out that the biggest budget increase was actually to the police, at a time that we are seeing, with a very notable exception, I understand, a decrease in violent crime. So given that we know that poverty is the most defining factor in crime in our town, I would suggest that we start putting a lot more money towards our school and housing rather than making the biggest increase to our police who are paid very well and have a very large budget, especially in comparison to our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me get your name again for the record. I apologize, I couldn't hear at first round.
Al Lewis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Roden, 340 Heather Cove. Most of you probably realize what this is. I know we're far away now. I know you probably really enjoy that, okay? Most of us, probably the next generation, they don't use this like we did coming up, okay? But for me, every month, I have income and outgo. And if my income is not meeting up with my outgo, I'm in trouble, all right? I'm concerned about the amount of money that I see flowing through Athens-Clark County. I mean, where do we keep getting it from other than the taxpayers? I know the mayor has proposed or thrown out the idea of a one-cent sales tax increase. You know, that would take us to 9% if I've got my math correct. You know, more than any other counties around here. You know, people are going to leave Clark County and buy their goods in Oconee or Barrow or Jackson or Madison County, you know? I, I just think there needs to be much more thought put into and dialogue with the community on where these funds are going. So I would ask you to really consider, you know, you kind of have an open checkbook, you know, to be able to create more revenue. We as citizens do not have that, and I think about the citizens that are on the low-income strata. You know, they don't have it, so I encourage you to relook at that. And by the way, I wasn't born last night. There's no checks in here, okay? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roden.
John Roden, I live where he lives. When I was a child, I was often told by my father, "Not another word." He used that phrase when he no longer wanted to hear an argument. At that point, there was no recourse for a vulnerable child to express an opinion. Not another word. I am no stranger to the three-minute rule, but I am no longer a child. As an adult, I'm well aware that the authority figure in my home was not always right, but he was the ultimate authority. Those of you seated in front of me are the authority. You have access to information long before you make it available to the public. You have more time and resources to see and understand the inner workings of the budgetary process. By design, your most revealing discussions occur behind closed doors and in private settings. Meanwhile, in homes all over town, families are struggling financially. They understand the realities and confines of a budget and the sobering truth that you cannot spend more than you make. Herein lies the problem. This body, the mayor, the manager, as of right now, and commission, you don't make the money you're spending. You're spending other people's money. You're proverbial carpetbaggers. Carpetbaggers were financial opportunists. They took advantage of the vulnerable and the needy. The budget is an opportunity, whether for good or for ill. Carpetbaggers raced to the South to trick and, and very optimistic people who have been guaranteed freedom and an opportunity to prosper, the American dream. But self-serving interlopers exploited these newfound rights and high hopes of former slaves and war-weary people. Greedy scoundrels took advantage of the person's precious trust of these free men, the hopeful who were uninformed and unsuspecting. You here are entrusted with the money others have worked hard to obtain. You spend other people's money as if it belonged to you. It doesn't belong to you. It's only, only belong to you. It's the people's money. This budget is an example of greed and disrespect. You rob residents of what little they have with promises of something better. Then by your budgetary fiat, your authoritative and arbitrary order, you enrich your own personal and pet agendas. You show little regard to the cries of the people and mock their annoying three-minute public comment. So as an adult, a free citizen of America, and neither a serf nor anybody's slave, I would prefer not to hear the condescending, hegemonious mockery...
Thank you, Ms. Roden. I appreciate you coming this night.
...by your arbitrary three-minute lockdown. Not another word.
Is there anyone else here to speak to the budget this evening? It's an opportunity for our folks to hear. Good evening.
Good evening. John Q. Williams, also the sheriff. I reside in District 6. I'm going to change up a little bit and be somebody who actually asks for more money. Imagine that. I'm thankful, I sent an email. Hopefully you all got that. If you haven't read it, please do when you get a chance, kind of outlining some of my points, because I was made aware of some intricacies about that. I don't have the long speech that I had earlier, so I'll amend just slightly. I understand that that $540,000, it was for a pay study. It's not entirely for the pay study, and it may also go to funds if it comes to it, which would help get my deputies more pay. I still will assert that there is no need for a pay study. You raised the police department salary and now their full. You did not raise ours equivalently, and we're over 40 officers, deputies, short. We cannot continue to function. It's not safe. Furthermore, I will say this, even if you decide to go ahead with this study, instead of just doing the common sense right thing, we cannot allow Mercer Group to again be that group that does this study. They've already done the last two studies and led to the same outcome. Furthermore, what I want everybody to realize, this Mercer Group is ran by former accounting manager Alan Reddish, who during his time as manager fought to get rid of pay parity between the sheriff's office and the police department. And now, with that pay study, it has been realized. Furthermore, he runs this company, and now the HR manager, who told me when I questioned the validity of the study, that I need to stay in my lane, is now working with that same Mercer Group. Can we really expect a fair study now? One idea would be to go right in our backyard. We have this large university that does studies, and they could be an option. Again, I reassert, we do not need a pay study. Just look at the results. My deputies are just as certified, just as capable, and it's not that we can't do traffic stops or anything else under the code of law. That's been the agreement, an agreement that I didn't sign up, my deputies didn't sign up, and it does not prohibit us from doing any law enforcement actions in this county or anywhere in the state of Georgia. Other things that need to be addressed is overtime pay not being paid. It's on a four-week basis instead of when it's earned. That would help morale in my department. Typically, when there's a new chief...
Thank you, Sheriff Williams.
They get everything. A new sheriff, y'all decide that y'all want to take away things. Please correct this.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tim Johnson, and I'm executive director of Family Connection Communities and Schools of Athens. I live in Normal Town, and I'm here to speak about funding for the Neighborhood Leaders Program. At the Mark Work session, we shared with you that we would like for the neighborhood leaders to receive funding, or pressed to receive funding to provide neighborhood leaders with a pay raise comparable to your own staff at 4%. And we also requested an assistant to the program director, Terrace Thomas. She is a great program director, but she's directing 17 full-time and two half-time staff, and that's too much even for someone as extraordinary as Ms. Thomas. I apologize for the late requests that I understand y'all got last week. At the Mark Work session or preparing for it, we were told that the dollar funding request would be asked for later, and on May 23rd, we received an email asking if we had any budgetary concerns, and I responded with a reminder of what we had asked for in March, and was told the budget process was continuing and to submit a proposed budget reflecting our request by 5:00 p.m. on May 29th, which we did, and I understand it was shared with the commission the following day. I've also been told that the commissioners considered that too late, and again, I apologize. I wish I had sent you something in March when we knew what we were looking for. But I do want to say that we appreciate the great partnership that the commission and your staff have provided for the neighborhood leaders. In fact, this partnership was initiated by the commission, and it has really brought extraordinary gains for our community in building community and helping people particularly in some of our most challenged neighborhoods feel more connected to the community as a whole and to the local government specifically. In addition, there have been enormous economic benefits for the community, literally many millions of dollars, $8.9 million a year in SNAP benefits alone now. And several of the neighborhood leaders themselves have moved into leadership positions in nonprofits, business, and the Athens-Clark County Government. So I respectfully request that you add the pay raises for the neighborhood leaders as well as the new assistant director position. In closing, I want to thank you all for your dedication and service to this community. You spend long hours doing really important, complex work, and I appreciate every one of you. I'm retiring on June 30th after 33 years in this position, and I appreciate the great support and partnership with you all, and I will remain a member of this community. But I have to say that I'm very pleased that our board of directors selected an extraordinary individual to succeed me, and Aaron Thompson Podvin? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak to the budget this evening?
My name is Tom Oliver. I'm the chief deputy for the Clark County Sheriff's Office. I live off Lexington Road. One of the things I would ask you guys to consider is the history of Athens. I've been a cop in Athens for a while. I'm a third-generation police officer. One of the things that gets tossed around is public safety and community-oriented policing and all of these things, and a lot of people don't know what it actually means. I've been in this county long enough to remember when my backup was at most four minutes away. That is a great deal of comfort for a police officer, okay? That only happens when the police department is fully staffed and the sheriff's office is really close to being fully staffed. So I would strongly ask you guys to consider that when making these decisions, because the thing that community-oriented policing, what everybody desires, takes is time, okay? I have been a police officer that has spent enough time in the community to teach young people how to tie their shoes, because I got out of my car and walked around 15 minutes per hour on my eight-hour shift. Right now, nobody has the time to do that. And it was also a part of me that made the community issues that I worked in my issues, and to develop that trust and to maintain that trust into my current position. This is not about a position or a rank, it's about who we are as public servants. And in reference to pay studies and the investments that we put into these pay studies, I have asked for the science behind the pay study, and only been told that it's defensible. If the science is what it really is, I'm a reasonably intelligent and educated person, I think I can understand. So if you want to stand behind the science, provide the science to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Everett. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Frank Woods. Live at 265 Robert Hardeman Road. I also work at the sheriff's office. I happen to be the jail commander. Just wanted to detail for you a couple of incidents today. I didn't have anybody to work Housing Unit 1, which is our orientation unit. When a human being that lives in Clark County is arrested, can't bond out, they go to the orientation unit. Some of them are detoxing from drugs. They need to get in touch with their attorneys. They need to call their family members. I didn't have anybody to get them out today on free time. They couldn't get out to take a shower. Some of them started busting their flaps open to the doors, throwing bodily fluids on the officer's desk. One of them spread feces in two of the cells. Had to call deputy sheriffs in from multiple places to get that area cleaned up, make it safe, and make sure that the human beings can get out and that they're safe. This weekend, had an individual fall head injury, loaded him up in the ambulance. I didn't have a deputy sheriff to put in that ambulance to get him to the hospital to call an officer in from the road, deputy sheriff from the road. So I would like to echo the sheriff's sentiments that we're, 48 officers down, 48 deputies down, we need some help. Anything you can do for us, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Woods. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Sidney Waters, 6 South Stratford Drive. In 15 days, I will be 79 years old. I don't consider myself to be senile. In August, I will have lived in Athens 47 years. May I ask what this community leader is all about? I have just recently learned about the community leaders. Maybe I'm on the wrong side of the aisle to be, to be a part of a community leader. I've never had a community leader knock on my door or contact me or ask for a neighborhood meeting. meeting at all, and now I find out that they are a budgetary item. What line of the budget are these community leaders on? And this gentleman said he's retiring in thirty-three years. Where have I been? What else is going on with the Clark County Board of Commissioners that taxpayers don't know about? You know, it just really makes me wonder where I am in my community. I'm just lost as to what's going on, so I would like to know, who is my community leader? May I have an address and a phone number for them? Who are these people? And I apologize, I will have to fill out one of these later, because I was not expected to speak tonight. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Erin Thompson Podman. I live at 863 North Chase Street. I am the incoming executive director of Family Connection Communities and Schools of Athens. I am currently in a transitional time, working alongside our soon-to-be-retired, longtime-serving leader. This community is a place that I hold dear and a place that has shaped me in many ways. I'm a proud product of the Clark County School District, and I'm now the mama of two CCSD students who are engaging in their own political process here tonight. I did not ask him to do that, but he decided to do that. My husband and I have made a conscious decision to invest in the Athens community, because we firmly believe that when every member of the community has the opportunity to thrive, we are all better off. My involvement in and collaboration with Family Connection Communities and Schools spans nearly two decades. I believe in our mission. I believe what we do matters, and I'm passionate about bringing others to the cause. And as the incoming executive director, I am excited to lead and grow with our hard-working team. I am three weeks into my role, as I mentioned, drinking water through the proverbial fire hose, but I do know this. The work our team is doing is contributing to the collective well-being of our community. Our Neighborhood Leaders and our school-based psych coordinators are affecting change on a hyper-local level. My successor has already shared the details of our request, and I'm here tonight to echo his sentiments and to respectfully ask you to consider our proposed budget for the incoming year. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson Podman. Any other folks here to speak to the budget this evening? Good evening.
Linda Crocky, 119 McNutt's Creek Drive. Wasn't going to speak, but it's just when the sheriff's officers came up and spoke, it just dawned on me, the first time I think it ever came and spoke, was when they were wanting to defund the police, and they were low in number. Thank goodness that didn't happen. Was glad that they got a pay raise. Had to fight for firefighters, had to fight now for the sheriff's office. I thought government's main job was the safety of its people. I think they're a top priority, and I just want them to know that people I know in this community are behind them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crocky. Good evening.
Hey, John Marsh, 310 Holman Avenue. I'll try and keep this short for everybody. I'm here to talk about affordable housing, and one part of affordable housing is being able to afford the house once you've bought it. And that's an ongoing concern. I've talked to quite a number of older folks around Athens that have lived in their houses for decades, and now they're saying, hey, we're about to run out of money. Talked to people who said they've only got another year or two, and they will be out of money because of the expense of all of this. So now I want to start talking about the budget itself. And so you're proposing a increase, and this is with a table, so what you're really talking about is an increase on the existing properties. All of the new properties and all of that, and the new people that moved in, that's gravy for you. But what we're talking about is for the existing homeowners. And so you're talking about an increase of 7.13%, which is better than double the rate of inflation. So the numbers for May are not out yet, but from April of 2023 to April of 2024, it was 3.36% inflation from March to March, '23 to '24, 3.48%. February to February, 3.15%. January, 3.09%. And I could keep going on. It's more than double the rate of inflation. You are already spending a lot of money from last year and all of that, and so it seems to me to take a lot of gall to say, hey, when everybody's hurting, put the pedal to the metal, double this inflation rate, we're just going to go spend money. So I ask that you, at the very least, keep it down there to this rate of inflation of, you know, about roughly 3%. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Good evening.
Good evening. William James, 250 Crystal Lane, District 6. I had not intended to speak tonight, but I felt compelled after hearing some of the other comments. We moved here, my wife and I, two and a half years ago. We bought a home with which we're very happy from a former deputy sheriff here. The deputy left to go to work in a neighboring county where he would receive greater respect and higher pay. Priorities, ladies and gentlemen, I urge you to consider priorities. Public safety is the highest priority. The safety of the citizens of this county should be, and I'm sure they are, if you consider it properly, your highest priority. So if our sheriff's department is not the most highly-trained law enforcement group in the county, the state, if they're not very highly-paid for the work that they do, then we don't have our priorities straight, and we don't deserve to be safe. So please, priorities, consider our priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, this evening. Good evening.
Good evening. Mara Zuniga, Winterville, Georgia. I'm here to support the sheriff's department. I think I've heard the sheriff's department for two years already ask for funding, and I've seen the budget where money goes, and I'm wondering, a lot of these nonprofits, including the Neighborhood Leaders, I mean, have you guys shown the public the results to that funding or any other profits? I'm wondering if, you know, we're okay with these studies that you pay 400,000-plus and you pay attention to these studies. Is there a way that we can ask you guys to have a study of how effective these programs have been? Because as part of, I'm a mother, and I've gone through the school system with my kids. I don't recall any time these programs being effective as far as my kids or the kids around there. So I would really love to see where we could trim the fat with a lot of these fundings that you give money to. You don't ask for results. We don't see the results. We don't know the turnout to these monies. So if we can trim the fat on some of these fundings that are not being effective, that you're giving 5,000 here, 10,000 there, 100,000 here. And as a matter of fact, in this Neighborhood Leader Program, Family Connections, I think the mayor's a board member. I find that to be a conflict of interest, someone asking for money and you're on the board, as well as other people, you know? And I see a lot of the same people being in the same board members of other nonprofits that get the funding. So I find that a conflict of interest. I would say that that would be another issue that you guys may want to address, how much of a conflict of interest it is that some of you guys are members to the boards and you have to say yes or no to those fundings, and of course, the study. And I think that if you do that, we can find how we can trim the fat on some things and fund programs and staff and departments, like the sheriff's department, which I see these men and women out there doing a lot of the footwork, communicating with the people in the community, going out there and doing their job efficiently and always with a chin up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zuniga. Good evening.
Hey. My name is Rob Woolery. I live at 245 Lakeland Drive, District 6. I wasn't going to speak either, but I've lived in Athens for fifty-three years, I mean, really almost my whole life, and I love Athens. And I'm getting priced out. It's just too expensive, too many things that we're spending money on. But the sheriff's department, the police department, it's not safe in Athens, like it used to be and like it should be. I have no idea what all y'all go through and everything you have to juggle. I can't even imagine, but I sure would like to suggest that instead of spending 540,000 trying to figure out if we should give them a raise, can each one of y'all spend a day with them and help them clean that cell out? Can you imagine? Think about that for a minute. Is that what you want to deal with? You don't want to deal with that, but thank God y'all deal with that. Us normal people appreciate you like crazy, and it's scary that so many people are leaving that honorable job because they don't get paid enough. Man, please make Athens Clark County safe. We don't want to leave, but we want to be safe, and we just, I just want y'all to know we love y'all and we appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Woolery. Is there anyone else here to speak to the FY25 budget this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Daniel. I'mma use my address as being this place. It's a sad day. I didn't come here to speak today either, but the Lord put it on my heart to. But the thing is, situation with the sheriff's department, that's sad. That's really sad. All this money going out everywhere, houses not being built for low-income people, but it's okay, because it's not dealing with you all. But the thing is, we need the sheriff's department. All this violence going on out here in Athens, Georgia, all this killing, all this shooting, and you don't think enough of them? That hurts me to the core of my heart. And I know half of y'all up there feel the same thing, too. But the thing is, it's a clique. When it come to be a clique, you do what he says, she says. You don't do your heart. You do this clique situation. But always remember this, when a day come that you can't have your clique and you standing by yourself like them and see what gonna happen, it gonna be a sad day. It gonna be a day that you'll never forget, and it gonna be a day that you gonna be on your knees, asking the Lord forgive you, because we need help in Athens, Georgia. They need money. They need uniforms. They need cars. They need houses. They need everything y'all need and more, because just like the man just said, can y'all go to one of them jails, cells, and clean up what they had to clean up? Half of y'all have maids to clean y'all house, so I know you're not gonna clean that. It's a sad day, and I'm so sad, and I'm so disappointed, but I know a chance is headed this way today.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Good evening.
Hey, my name is John Alvarez. I'm in District 7. Just someone said earlier that, you know, like you have to think about the sheriffs who have to go and clean the cells, and I just want us to think about the people that are in the cells and having to live in that condition. I mean, we're talking about like increasing funding for the sheriffs, but at the end of the day, like there's a massive number of people in Clark County that are imprisoned right now and having to live in those conditions. And, you know, we've now talked about like the sheriff's department not having money. The average, the starting salary for a police officer in Athens Clark County is 70,000. We see all of these cops riding around in cars, but then when it's time to have funding for social programs, we don't have any money, but, you know, cops just got a 20% pay increase despite crime going down nationally. So I think we should focus our priorities when police, sheriffs, they don't keep us safe. What keeps us safe is strong schools, strong housing, where people don't have to resort to crime, because they're not worried about making a dollar. So I think that we should be investing in our community and not investing in violence and militarization, because at the end of the day, they don't keep us safe, we keep us safe, and while they may be able to catch a criminal afterwards, police do not prevent crime from happening. So please continue to invest in your community and not in another, you know, unnecessary squad car, because like literally, like it's a 50,000 squad car, and then there's however many of those, and they're just sitting around unnecessarily, like just sitting, idling, wasting gas, right outside while there's people starving. Like at the, at the library, they have cops just sitting there waiting for like stuff to go down, right? But there's people right there that need housing. Just like give them the money, like come on, like it's such a simple decision. Like, yeah, we should invest in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Johnson, and I would like to speak in support of public safety, specifically the sheriff's office. In 2018, Management Advisory Group came to the Unified Government. Actually, it was December 12th, 2017, when they did a presentation, and they were going to do a presentation on all of the government. And at that time, the conclusion of the public safety departments were to actually make their salaries equal. The premise was their work is equal. I understand that two additional studies have been conducted, so a total of three, just to say you're not equal. But here's the thing, Management Advisory Group is a national consulting company. They do just HR consulting reports from Anaheim all the way down to Miami-Dade. They've done dozens, they do dozens a year. They were credible. I was also told that I couldn't figure out the math, and I'm a mathematician, so I don't agree with it, I just did not receive it. But what I want to impart on you tonight is that I want you to understand the imminent threat that every public safety professional encounters that you do not know about. I didn't know about it until I attended Citizens Police Academy in 2016. That is with the police department, but I had an opportunity to talk to all public safety professionals, the firefighters, the probation, sheriff's office, the police, corrections, and we have ancillary investigators in various departments. They never know what to expect when they knock on that door, and I want you all to consider that when you say they're not equal, this is the measure of their value. Every single last one of them have to deal with the mental health that comes from a tragedy. Every single one of them have to deal with not being protected, not feeling safe. That's a real thing. You can either spend money on increased healthcare costs by funding the mental health treatment, or you can properly fund all of the public safety professionals equally. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Good evening.
Evening. I'm Michael McLendon, 201-9 Hamilton Road. Sheriff Williams, thank you very much for speaking truth tonight. I think we all needed to hear that. I'm going to be very brief. I've sent you a lot of emails. I've sent you a lot of data, a lot of information, but I want to do two things very quickly. One, I want to thank those commissioners who stood up and refused to let the public be muzzled at these commission meetings, and I hope that that will continue, if not be prepared for war, bureaucratic war. And the second is, I want to thank the rank-and-file employees of Athens Clark County, from public safety to the water department, to the trash department, to people who take your cash when you pay your bills. I want to apologize to them for the fact that Athens Clark County can invest in a lot of things that are not worthwhile, but they can't invest in modernizing the processes, practices, and tools that employees have to use. So therefore, there's- So therefore, there's nothing efficient, effective, and productive about what goes on in Athens Clark County government. The next thing I want to say is, and I've said this last year, is that you're not physically responsible. You're advocating, abdicating your role of responsibility, of physical responsibility. You look at the tax digest like you're piggy bank, that you can harvest everything that's in there as if there are no consequences. Just today, I was reading in your dashboard, performance dashboard, about the rent prevention program. And there was a footnote in that that talked about how many people that they served because last year, those people could not pay their rent because of the increased property taxes. So here you are, as one gentleman said earlier, doing all you can to make Athens more unaffordable to people. Back in May, I sent a number of, number of you a list of $15 million worth of cuts that could be made in the mayor's budget with reasons why. None of these cuts affect core services or infrastructure. More than enough money to take care of the public safety requirements that the mayor did not fund in his budget, including the Sheriff's Office. A down payment to start rightsizing Athens Clark County government and staffing, and also to start working on backlog of infrastructure as well as give some payback to taxpayers. But all I see from y'all is spend more and more and more. So I just ask the question, how much is enough? And how long is this gonna go on before people are totally broke? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLendon. Anyone else here to speak to the FY25 budget this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Bell, and I'm the Director of the Athens Regional Library System. I just want to thank you all for even considering our budget, and I know that you're making some really difficult decisions, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Any other people to speak to the budget for FY25 tonight? Good evening.
Hello, Commissioners and Mayor Gertz. I'm Todd Lovett, 380 Maple Forest Drive. I wasn't gonna speak today, but after hearing everyone's sentiment, it made me think about a phone call I had this morning with my fellow neighbor. He had recently just taken a position in the correctional facility about eight months ago. And we were speaking about how we used to see each other more often and haven't heard from him in about eight months. And he mentioned about how much overtime and how much he has, has to catch up on sleep and he doesn't have much time to spend with his family and that it's been taxing, that there's about one officer per unit when it's supposed to be around three. I've attended a lot of the meetings in the past and the budget hearings, and I've read the, the report thoroughly. And there is some, some spending that I think needs to be reallocated, redistributed. There's money that I think, someone mentioned that there should be money taken away from nonprofits and so forth, but I think it should be more so reallocated to, to profits that are making, there are nonprofits that are making, that has a good effect and, and great outcomes. I think those need to be focused on. And money needs to be reallocated to amenities in the community. And I think there should be, I think it's a moot point, but there should be an increase to the Sheriff's Department and, you know, these offices in the correction facility because there's obviously a need and we already see hand-to-hand results that these officers, there's not enough officers in these facilities to, to operate the facility. I don't think there's a, a report, like someone said, a study that's necessary. So I just wanted to speak here for my neighbor, because he's not here, because he actually has to go and probably put in more work overtime tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. All right, with public comment on the FY25 budget for our taxpayer bill of rights hearing being complete, we are gonna move on to Item H. Item H is abandonment of the Bedgood Road right-of-way. We need to have a separate public hearing on this. Is there anyone to speak to the Bedgood Road right-of-way? Seeing none, I'll move to action by the commission. Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hul and a second from Commissioner Fisher. Any discussion, Commissioner Hul?
Um, yeah, I, I just want to thank planning staff for answering some of my questions about this, and makes a lot of sense to me now that I fully understand it. Thanks.
Any follow-up, Commissioner Fisher?
No, I'm here.
There's a motion from Commissioner Hul, a second from Commissioner Fisher. Any input from other members of the body? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, we're gonna move on to our planning and zoning items. With each of these items, there is the opportunity for somebody to sign up in advance for a 10-minute segment, and we do have that in place for one item. But other than that, the three-minute opportunity, as described earlier, exists. So the first item regards 129 Peach Street. Is there anyone here to speak to 129 Peach Street? Good evening.
I'm Jada Fiorentino, and I'm a resident of Athens Clark County. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for all your time. I've met with some of you individually, and I really appreciate what you've poured into this situation and just hearing us out. This has been an educational and challenging process, but I just, you know, since the beginning of my recovery journey, I've known that it's my purpose to help others just like me. And as addicted women, we've experienced so much shame and trauma in one way or another, including the shame we put on ourselves. And this labor of love has been nothing more than trying to give these women, who are just like me, a safe and sober place to stay, that they can call home. A place where they can rebuild their lives and flourish and become everything they were always supposed to be. As a member of Athens Clark County community, we only want to be a part of the solution. If you remove the solution from the areas where the problems are, the only thing you have left is the problem. In 2024, that problem is very apparent. The opioid crisis has taken countless lives that could have been prevented. Help us to change the stigma and make recovery the expectation. These women do not have to end up on a list of statistics. They can be the exception in Athens Clark County. If this decision comes down to a parking, can we please choose someone's life over a parking spot? This is my passion and my heart. It means everything to me. Otherwise, my personal past is in vain. I've made it my mission to educate myself as much as possible. So far, I'm a Certified Addiction Recovery Empowerment Specialist in Addictive Diseases. I'm certified to teach the science of addiction and recovery. I'm trained to teach moral recognition therapy, which is a cognitive behavioral therapy that aims to improve moral reasoning and change decision-making instincts. Many judges who mandate women to our program also require that they take this class because it decreases the likelihood of the return to criminal justice system. I've received infant and adult CPR, first aid, and Narcan training. I attend as many Georgia Association of Recovery Residents trainings as I can while we're in the process of becoming GAR certified. I plan to continue to further my education to help me serve these women to the best of my ability, and I would just like you all to help me help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fiorentino. Is there anyone else here to speak to the Peach Street Project? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. My name is Shane Sims, and I reside at 410 Club Drive, Athens, Georgia. My profession is that I work in the field of behavioral health, specifically addictive diseases. I'm a Certified Addiction Recovery Empowerment Specialist, meaning that I have state certification to assist individuals seeking help to recover from substance use disorder. I'm also a Science of Addiction and Recovery Trainer, AKA SOAR Trainer. And one of my most consistent assignments here is that I perform SOAR training for nurses, for new nurses at Peachmont Athens Regional Hospital. One of the primary purposes of SOAR training is to, one, help individuals understand the disease of addiction, how it function. And in that understanding, you understand that it does not function according to logic or simple will of an individual. But the second obligation is that we must understand what does it take for an individual to recover from this disease? Because if we have no understanding as to what it takes to recover from the disease, then we only impose our thoughts on what we think should happen, and we end up in the quagmire that we are now, that many people go into treatment but also relapse. There's a saying that goes, darkness is the absence of light. And I say this to speak to the location of this sober living home for women. The first thing is that sober living homes are always established in an environment that is similar to the environments that the women and men will return to once they complete treatment. If we send them to an environment that does not stimulate the environment they have to return to, then we set them up for failure because they learn to make decisions and to operate and to function within the artificial environment. So the location is very deliberate, is very intentional. It's meant to allow them to recover within their communities with guidance, with accountability, so that once they leave from the safe spaces at sober living homes, they have already become accustomed to functioning in those environments. The next thing is that if we remove light, meaning the opportunity for people to get well, to get better, from in between the spaces of darkness, then that darkness inevitably will prevail. This is just the nature of darkness itself. So what I say to this commission and plead with this mayor and commission to consider is that Athens is a beautiful place, but if we don't continue to beautify it with hope, with opportunity to get better, that beauty almost overnight can disappear and go away. So I ask you to support the beautification of Athens by supporting the opportunities for people to get better, to become responsible adults, to become taxpayer citizens, to breathe themselves, to weave themselves back to the fabric of our community. Because when you study recovery community, one thing you will find is that we are some of the most passionate, most resilient, most service-oriented people that you would ever meet. And I pray that you continue to give this opportunity to the citizens of Athens Clark County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Katie Pierce. I live at 150 East Pacers Drive, Athens, and I'm the Phase 2 Women's Director at Fresh Wind Recovery Ministries in Athens. Gosh, now I've lost my train of thought, sorry. There's a, there's a whole slew of people out here who are here to, to support the recovery ministry or the recovery community. And you call the houses halfway houses, sober living, rehab, whatever, but what we're all doing is rehab, right? Short for rehabilitation. And that's what we see happen every day in, in our houses. We see women and men come in broken. We see them coming out of jail, out of prison, off the streets, when their lives have been burned to the ground. And we see those lives being rebuilt. We see families being restored. We see men and women going back to work and becoming productive members of society. And I can assure you that, that nobody is in it for the money. Nobody's in it for the benefits. We put in countless hours and get our hands dirty and sometimes get our hearts broken. But the way that you get to watch people's lives being, being brought back to wholeness is, is overwhelming. And that's what, that's what Jada's doing at New Life. And you, yes, there's a shortage of housing for men and women in Athens. There, there can't be enough. And I think it's interesting that we're here on the same night that people are speaking in support of money for the, the jails and the deputies and the sheriff's departments because that is one of the things that we do, is we keep people out of those institutions on the regular, you know? And the women that I work with stay. You know, they're, they might be mandated for a year, but they stay longer to get their lives more and more in order. So I wish I could have spoken that more eloquently. I hope you can hear the heart of what I have to say about the women and men that we serve in the, in the recovery community here. And I wish that you could spend more time with us and with the other people in the room that pour their hearts into soul and souls into, into the recovery community because it's a beautiful place to be. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Good evening.
My name is Laura McCoy, and I'm a woman in long-term recovery, but I work with the Accountability Courts in Athens Clark County, and I found recovery through Felony Drug Court and a women's residence like New Life House of Hope. And it is so important that programs like Drug Court have the ability to partner with facilities like this, and the more of them we have, like, there's always someone needing a bed in one of these facilities. And she's got eight beds at this one house, and that's, she gets 11 beds at this one house. And that's 11 beds that will keep women alive, and it's 11 graves that we don't have to dig. We have a woman that went through her program and has graduated New Life, that's about to graduate Felony Drug Court. She has went from being homeless, using, to in jail, to through New Life House of Hope. She is now renting her own apartment in Athens. She works, she pays her taxes, and she gives back to this community. And I just want to share that with you before you all make your decisions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. Good evening.
Good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us to be here once again. Every facet up here is familiar with our situation. First and foremost, I am a person living in long-term recovery myself. After 20-plus years of grappling and in and out of jails, you know, I've put eight years of living life of wellness together. And that's only because somebody gave me a second chance and a third chance. Somebody loved me when I couldn't love myself. We have houses here in Athens Clark County for men and women to better their lives, to get their lives back together, to reunite their families, to become productive members of society instead of a menace. You know? It's not gonna just take one recovery house to save everybody. We could put one on every corner. Why not? There's bars on every corner. You know, just saying. I want to thank you all for your time and consideration. Have a good evening.
Thank you. I just need your name for the record.
My name is Sunshine McCoy.
Thank you, Sunshine. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Sloan, and I happen to reside at 129 Peach Street. I started my recovery journey two years ago at another recovery residence, and I owe my life to the community. While I was there, I was diagnosed with cancer. At the end of my, once I graduated my program, Jada offered me the opportunity to come be a house lead at her residence. So I'm there with these women, day in and day out, 24 hours a day, offering them my experience, strength, and hope. Without recovery houses, a lot of us wouldn't be here. So I'm very lucky to be one of the, one of the exceptions instead of the statistics.
Is there anyone else here to speak to the Peach Street Project this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Gooden. My address is 1692 Prince Avenue. I'm also an employee at Divas Who Win, a peer coach at Divas Who Win on 645 Hawthorne Avenue. And I have had the gracious opportunity to work with these women in this recovery house and in the recovery, all the recovery houses throughout Athens, Georgia. And our mission is to provide a safe space. And our mission is to provide a safe space for women navigating through sex trafficking, sex work, and substance use disorder. And I have had the pleasure of seeing many, various of these women come to our center every day and try to better their lives. My job is to empower them and to help them to change their mindset, because if we change our mindsets, we change our thoughts. If we can change our thoughts, we can change our world. You know? And, and, and I'm just begging you and asking you to help us dismantle this, that society has set stigma on people who do drugs, you know? I'll share a little bit of my story. I started using when I was eight years old. I'm fifty-eight years old. I didn't get it the first time, I didn't get it the second time, I didn't get it the third time. But somebody believed in me till I learned how to believe myself. So I ask you, you know, let's keep the recovery house open. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I guess we got to sign one of these.
Yeah, you just fill one out, then you can leave it with clerk.
All right. My name's Edmund Patterson. I live at 257 Russell Wood Drive, Athens, Georgia. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the, them getting their permit. I'm a carer. I work in the recovery field, as a lot of people before me have spoke. What you may not know about Athens, and I want to applaud all of you for it, is you have built a city that is spoken about even in other states. Because I have a large recovery network, right? I go into Carolina a lot. I actually traveled to Mississippi to a recovery event there. And what we have here is a gem in Athens that needs to be held onto. We have a place for people to come and recover. And it is because of the work that has been done by the commissioners and the things that have happened. And saying that, I hope that you vote to keep it that way. I hope that you vote to keep that growing. I hope that you give them their permit and keep on with that tradition of supporting recovery. Just a little sidebar, as I am a voting citizen, I would also like for y'all to take care of the Sheriff's Department. We have a pretty good one, and as we all know, if you bought a gallon of milk lately, cost of livings went up. They do a hard job. My primary purpose was to come and speak about Peach Street, but after hearing stuff about the Sheriff's Department, I think they really need to be a priority too. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, so Peach Street proposal is in District Two. Commissioner Link, I'll let you make a motion regarding this item.
Yeah, I want to, first of all, I want to thank Jada for inviting me to the home on Peach Street, and, and thank you for your hard work, helping these women, and to everybody in that line of work. If we're going to get serious about impacting the mental health crisis, the homelessness crisis, if we're to get serious about keeping people out of jail, we need to come up with a way to assure that these homes can function. And I, I want to propose that we approve this with just a few minor requirements for a couple extra parking spaces and, and a driveway that enables any visitors to, to turn around in that driveway. The location of this property is, is on a dead-end street with no real turnaround. It's almost a full acre of property. It's, it's set back from the street. It's, it's, you know, clearly buffered from neighboring properties. And they run a really beautiful home and do really important work. And these are not short-term stays. From what I understand, many of these women are there a year or more. They're learning how to completely rebuild their lives and, and totally function and, and get back into society and become productive members of society. It is effectively a home. So I want to propose that we adopt this with the few minor recommendations for parking and driveway and clear address signage.
So motion for approval of the commission to find option. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link and a second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Thornton, any follow-up remarks?
I really, I really am torn about this, not, I'm torn because people do not understand how, what am I trying to say? This is so important. You know, this could be anybody's daughter, sister, mother. And I understand the concern with neighbors. I, I get that. One person told me about the two drug houses that in that was in, that's in that neighborhood. I mean, they could actually point the drug houses out. So my thought is, and it goes back to all of this connects, if you, if we can point two drug houses out, why don't we shut those drug houses down? So we can help people who are trying to get their lives back together. We don't put them on the street and let the drug dealers stay. That doesn't make no sense to me. But I support this, and I'm going to get beat up later by some folk, but I do support this, and I wish you well.
I've got Commissioner Fisher and then Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did have the opportunity to visit 129 Peach Street. I want to thank Jada for inviting me over, and, and the work that they do for those ladies is, is incredible. Also, one thing that she relayed to me was that they bought a van. So one of the concerns was that those ladies would have to walk to the bus stop in order to get, you know, to jobs. Well, now they got a van. All those ladies get taken to work in the morning and picked up in the afternoon. They get back to the house to have duties. The place was immaculately clean. And for myself, it was an eye-opener to see that. And I think when you got people in recovery, and I grew up with an alcoholic father, so I, I know what that's looked like. So when you see people in recovery trying to do better for something, every one of those ladies have a job. All of them work. So for me, it's an opportunity to improve our community. It's an opportunity for people to get better, to do things and be productive citizens within our community. So I'm going to support this CDO and hopefully the rest of my colleagues will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor?
I was one, from, from the very beginning, who had my concerns about the location of the house. And Jada reached out to me and invited me. And fortunately, I wasn't able to meet with Jada, but I did ride by the house. And I also reached out to one of my, my really close advisors, I would call them. We talked for hours. And the same, I, I grew up in, in that atmosphere as well, and so I know what addiction looks like. And I don't want to be a stumbling block to any organization that was trying to make Athens a better place. I support you guys wholeheartedly. I, I just want you guys to go and do great things and, you know, possibly come on over to District Three. But I, I support you guys as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Davenport?
So I have a different, I have a different take on this. I support the recovery. I support the work that the young women are doing and the community's support. But I do just have concern about that neighborhood, that I hope that my colleagues will understand and appreciate if a recovery house goes into Cedar Creek or to Green Acres or in Five Points area, y'all have the same, same due diligence and approving that as well. This, I'm, I'm all about preserving neighborhoods, it's not the use. I think y'all are doing wonderful work. It's just that this, this has been a traditional black neighborhood of working families, and this, this house was placed before permit, and I, I just think it is going to destroy the nature and characteristics of that neighborhood. Not that the work that these young women are doing are, are wrong. I just think it's a really bad location, and the surrounding area troubles me as well. But I wish y'all the best of luck, and that's just my opinion.
I've got Commissioner Hul.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I plan to support the motion on the floor. And, you know, I just kind of wanted to follow up on what my colleague just spoke to. This particular situation is really complicated for reasons that I don't really think have anything to do with this organization, but more just the long history of the way land use policies have pitted vulnerable people against each other and worked against working-class people and people of color. In this particular case, I think we should support this because I, I do feel like recovery houses should be allowed anywhere. And so I would urge this body to consider looking at our zoning code and following the lead of our, our state government, who doesn't do a lot of things I agree with, but does some things I agree with. And I'm really grateful that they passed a law this year that the governor signed that said halfway houses, which is the legal term they still use, have to be treated the same as any other zoning matter. And I feel like our code is what it is right now because they law mandated us treating them more harshly, you know, giving them special, kind of difficult treatment. And so now that that barrier isn't there on the state level, I, I would hope that on the local level, we could say that this sort of housing can exist in all zoning types. And then this phenomenon of, you know, historically black neighborhoods that are single-family in every way except their zoning category aren't the only ones that are facing this decision, so that it can happen in Five Points, and it can happen in Boulevard, and it can happen down the street from where I live off Talisi. So, so I, I do plan to support this tonight, and I also hope that we'll take the next, maybe more deep in the weeds, but also arguably bolder step to allow this sort of thing everywhere in the community.
Got Commissioner Myers, and then returning to Commissioner Link.
Yeah, I will be supporting this, but I do want to echo the sentiment that we need to review and broaden the areas that we're allowed the halfway houses. Commissioner Davenport brought up mentioning in Five Points and in Cedar Creek or Green Acres, but a halfway house wouldn't be allowed in those neighborhoods, even though they very much look like a single, they are single-family neighborhoods, which is what Peach Street looks like. However, it is not known to zone that way. So I hope we'll address this in the future so that we can have equity in where we are considering halfway houses and allowing them in the future.
Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I, I was just going to echo that as well. As we go through this future land use planning process, we really need to revisit our code and, and look at it from an equitable standpoint and, and look at the zoning of traditionally black neighborhoods and open up our zoning code when it comes to single-family neighborhoods. And when it comes to properties like this, look at things more like lot size and, and parking requirements rather than, you know, the, the zoning itself. You know, there are, these kind of homes are, are operating in single-family neighborhoods under the radar all over the, all over our community, and nobody even notices because they're, they're highly supervised environments. You know, these women are working really hard to, to maintain a stable, normal life, and, and they have onsite supervision. They come and go a lot because they all work. That's a requirement, and that's, that's something that helps them get back on their feet. So, you know, this, this is effectively a zoning issue, but it's a zoning issue that has really, really deep social implications, and we need to take a look at it as we revisit our code.
All right, Clerk Spratlin, give you a roll call, beginning with, oh, I'm sorry, I've got an ordinance to read, someone to have Attorney Drake do that.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to special use approval in the RM-1 mixed density residential district for a parcel of land located at 129 Peach Street comprising approximately point, 0.92 acres and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake, and we'll begin a roll call with Commissioner Link.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Ambie?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Nine yes, one no.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. All right, we're going to move on to public input on 1005 Henderson Extension. 1005 Henderson Extension. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to this project? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Kristen Carlin. I'm a resident of Athens Clark County. I would just like to say thank all of you for taking the time to hear us so many times over and putting so much thought into these decisions that you're making. Basically, the exact same thing we're doing at 129 Peach Street will be going on at Henderson Extension. It'll just be helping so many women do exactly the same thing they're doing now, which has become miracles, and, and learning to return to society and, and do something different. You know, y'all have heard my story several times. If it wasn't for recovery residents, I wouldn't be standing here today. So just please give them that same opportunity to become something different or something they'd never been able to be before. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlin. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Dan Mark. I'm an Athens resident. I didn't intend to speak, but I got a question. I think I heard that like there was a proposal to spend close to, what was it, four hundred and some odd thousand to do a study to see if sheriffs should receive more funding.
This is just for speaking to the Henderson Extension Project?
Yeah, this, this goes to the extension, though. My question is, was there any money spent to do a study of the community that's being affected by this proposed extension? Was there any money allocated to that? I have not heard any community input. I have not heard anyone representing the community to be affected. It seemed to me like that would be a better allocation of funds than questioning whether or not sheriffs need more money. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to Henderson Extension? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Sunshine McCoy. I just want to say thank you to you all. You just don't know how many lives that, that's going to be saved. You don't know how many women right now still have a place to lay their head tonight. And just like I spoke about earlier, you know, let's get them in as much as we can, as long as they're running safe and effective, let's do it. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. All right, so this is also in District Two, so I'll ask Commissioner Link to make a motion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will move to approve. This is, again, a very, very large lot, and it's actually zoned RM2, which would allow for, you know, up to 25 beds per acre. This effectively calls for what is, in essence, a single-family home. That'll fit right in with the streetscape and has plenty of onsite parking, and it's, we'll be offering a good home for some folks who are doing some hard work to get back to a normal life.
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, and I have a second from Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Wright, any follow-up remarks?
I, I did just want to follow up on how glad I am that we get to move this forward with just one vote, when at the agenda setting, it was more complicated. So I'm also pleased that this is happening without the old way of doing it. So I appreciate everybody who got that taken care of so that, and now I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to speak to some, a concern I heard raised from the audience, and I think the context that that's getting at isn't, isn't lost on us. So in the staff report, which on the agenda item, if people look at the current version, it's page four of the PDF, staff actually did look into the question of what the impact would be on property values and the effects on neighbors in a community where facilities like this go. And without reading all of it, I'll just read this one paragraph. "In the past, staff have had concerns, have heard concerns that halfway houses would bring crime to the neighborhood and lower surrounding property values. Staff have looked into these concerns and did not find conclusive local evidence to validate or dispel these concerns." concerns we've heard in the audience. And I'll just use this microphone time to reiterate that Henderson Extension, like Peach Street, is the kind of neighborhood where this can happen. That's not what we would typically think of when we think of multifamily zoning, and it's a product of a unfortunate, to put it lightly, a cruel history. And so I do hope that our response will be to open up this sort of special use everywhere in the community, rather than to keep deliberating whether it should only be allowed in neighborhoods with a more complicated history. Thanks.
All right, I'll ask Attorney Drake to read the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to special-use approval in the RM2 mixed-density residential zoning with conditions, district for a parcel of land located at 1005 Henderson Extension comprising approximately 2.8 acres and for other purposes.
All right, thank you, Attorney Drake, I appreciate it. All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link and a second from Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Item 21 is a request for a single-family development at 2990 Barnett Shoals Road. Is there anyone here to speak to that this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Frank Pittman with Pittman Agri-Engineering. We're at 1050 Barbara Creek Drive in Watkinsville. Here representing the developer that is buying the property, it's a six-acre tract that's part of the Snap Finger PD. We are just asking to change the use under the current PD and not change its zoning class, it would still be part of the PD. Proposing 22 new single-family lots that would be same-size, same-size lots, same-size houses as the existing surrounding neighborhood. Be two short cul-de-sac streets. We did meet with the surrounding neighborhood, and what we're proposing is what we heard that they wanted to see, which are very similar houses, one-story homes which would match what's out there. We have designed this so that there would be no driveways off Snap Finger or off Barnett Shoals, but all off internal streets. The price point's gonna start in the low 300s, which in today's market is as affordable as you'll find for single-family homes. The planning staff recommended approval, planning commission did as well, and we would ask for you guys' approval here or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Is there anyone else here to speak to 2990 Barnett Shoals Road? All right, this is in District One, so I'm gonna ask Commissioner Davenport to make a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion from Commissioner Davenport and a second from Commissioner Link. Commissioner Davenport, any remarks?
I'd like to thank the residents, and especially Mr. Pittman, for working with the residents surrounding the neighborhood. He did take phone calls, he responded to the residents' concerns. This is the second iteration of the project that we have seen. He made some slight modifications. He respected people buffered to the existing neighborhood. He added some stormwater as well, and the little island in the entrance is gonna be preserved, so there's a garden, a community, well, ad hoc community garden that's at the entrance that will be maintained. But this is a lovely design, and I thank Mr. Pittman and the residents for working together to get this done. But it was gonna be a church, but prior to those plans to develop it into houses about 30 years ago, but a church had bought it, and it sat where lovely gears and critters used to run, but it'd be a great addition to the east side.
Commissioner Link, any further remarks?
Yeah, I'm just glad to see this addition of some modest, single-family housing that hopefully will bring some nice homes to families who live and work in our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, as District Eight write a budding to this development, I just wanna say that I appreciate that addition of these, what now is a modest-priced house in the low 300s. It's not something we would've said 10 years ago, but that is a reality now, and actually a modest-sized house. The east side is a very middle-class district, and this adds to that. This is a project that will allow people who are working in the school district, as UGA staff and other mid-level employment to think about buying a house, so I'm appreciative of that. Thank you.
Any further remarks from members of the body? All right, I'll ask Attorney Drake to read the ordinance for us.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to amending a planned development in the R8 single-family residential planned development district for a parcel of land comprising approximately six acres and located at 2990 Barnett Shoals Road and for other purposes.
Thanks, Attorney Drake. I've got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, and we're gonna move on to item 22, which is 247 Pulaski Street and associated addresses. And I do have Mr. Ellison, Mr. David Ellison, signed up for the 10 minutes, so I'll call Mr. Ellison to the podium.
Good evening, David Ellison, on behalf of the applicant. We're here today because my client is seeking to improve its property. It's a fraternity house, it's the SAE house, and what they're trying to do is essentially improve the accessory structure in the rear of the site so they can help preserve the historic building on this property that dates from the 1840s. They're also trying to combine these parcels in order to improve the parking areas for this particular property. We're here today on four variance requests. Planning commission recommended that the third variance request be approved, but they recommended denial of variance request number ones, two, and four. I'm here today to speak in regards to variance request number four, which is in regards to the sidewalk requirements. My client seeks a variance request to eliminate these sidewalks for two particular reasons. One, it wants to preserve the trees, vegetation, and hedges on this property. And two, it's gonna be incredibly expensive to install these sidewalks, and that may render this project unfeasible. So this house sits on a, has been used as a fraternity since 1929, it's considered legal nonconforming, but these improvements are shifting this through this special-use process. And so you can see in our application materials that through photographs from 1934, 1944, 1947, 1951, and 1980, confirm that the present hedges and trees and vegetation have remained consistent over the past century, and we wish to preserve that appearance so that the experience that all students have had over the past century will continue for future generations. The other issue is that requiring these sidewalks will be incredibly costly, that may render this project unfeasible. And I ask you to keep a few things in mind. One is, my client is not a developer that's going to improve this property and recoup expenses through a sale. It's a nonprofit organization that is never gonna obtain a return on this investment. This organization wants to enhance the experience of its students and alumni, and this may well kill this project. The cost also leads to the legal issue, and the problem of how this would be an unconstitutional exaction if you impose this condition on this property. We understand there's legitimate government interest in improving accessibility and increasing walkability and having sidewalks in the downtown area. The problem is, is that requiring sidewalks on this particular property is not proportionate to the impacts from this development. Generally speaking, in order to comply with the Constitution, there must be some rough proportionality between the condition on the development and the cost on that particular property. Importantly, the county must make an individualized determination that the required condition is both in nature to the extent proportional to the impacts of this proposed development. And I bring that up because the sole justification for requiring these sidewalks has been that we want to improve access, pedestrian access connectivity due to development on other parcels. Over the past five years or so, you have two new student housing developments immediately behind this property, and that has led to an increase in pedestrian traffic. And so the impacts from this development and other properties are being shifted, the cost of those impacts are being shifted onto my client's property. My client didn't cause this issue. There's absolutely nothing in this record so far to demonstrate how these sidewalks would be necessary based upon the use from this particular property. The use is gonna stay the exact same. We're not increasing the number of residents. In fact, if we have to put these sidewalks in place, my client's not gonna be able to use it because of the retaining walls. So the only sidewalk use coming from my client's property is gonna be Pulaski Street. And so I say all that because we believe it'd be unlawful if the county required these sidewalks. But even though I'm here to preserve my client's legal objections, and while it doesn't waive those objections, we're also willing to commit to a compromise solution. In front of y'all, y'all should, in front of you today, you should see a drawing of what we are suggesting would be a reasonable compromise and be the minimum amount of variance allowable to relieve us from this hardship. We're proposing to put a sidewalk along the rear of Newton Street and along Ree Street up to that point where it connects to my client's driveway. What we're also proposing is to put a crosswalk across Ree Street to connect to the existing sidewalk on the other side of Ree Street. And so we believe this satisfies staff's objectives and concerns to ensure there's connectivity of a sidewalk along the entirety of Ree Street without unfairly saddling all costs of development on other properties onto my client. Also point out that this crosswalk is at the high point of Ree Street, so we believe it'd be a safe vantage point for crossing. So we believe that this is a fair compromise that would achieve the county's concerns and allows my client to move forward with this project. Another item that we're asking for is an elimination of the beauty strip on this sidewalk, and that essentially would add an additional two feet of what we'd have to clear in order to put in this sidewalk. I say all that, you know, because basically the further you go back, then you're gonna have to have a higher retaining wall, and that's gonna cut into the roots in these trees that we want to preserve. If you see on this site plan here, next to the basketball court, there were a number of mature trees along Newton Street, and we wanna keep those. You know, there's other mature oaks along Ree Street that we'd also like to preserve, and so giving us as much room as possible to not encroach onto a property can save these trees and minimize the height of the retaining wall. So we ask that you approve variance number three and consider this alternative proposal. We believe this is fair, we believe this allows everyone to have a project that will be successful for both my client and for the entire community. I'd also say my client's client is here, and our client's engineer is here as well, and the contractor's here, if y'all have any questions about this project or their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison. Is there anyone else here to speak to 247 Pulaski Street and associated addresses? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna ask for a motion from Commissioner Wright.
Yes, the motion that I would like to make, so that we can nail down the details, I met with the applicant, and I was happy to learn that the variance for the sidewalk was more along the lines of a variance in that beauty strip and going with a six-foot sidewalk versus a variance to not even come forward with it. But as I confessed, I did not meet and get involved far enough ahead to be prepared for that today. So my motion is gonna be to table it till Friday, the 14th, and starting tomorrow, I'll be working with staff to nail down specifics that address what was brought forward in this visual that you have, to make it fit into staff and TPW and planning and legal and the steps that I need to do.
Motion on the floor is to table until Friday, June 14th. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I've got a second from Commissioner Link. Any further remarks? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will see this week from Friday. All right, next item tonight is a request regarding 1508 US Highway 29. Is there anyone here to speak to that request this evening? Good evening.
Good evening, Ben Prue with SPG Planners and Engineers. We're located out of Wire Park in Watkinsville. Just wanna thank everyone for your consideration of this rezone request from commercial rural to commercial general. As we mentioned in the last meeting, this will help allow a locally-owned business and lumberyard to expand their operations, and not only will it bring it into a more appropriate zoning category for its land use, but also help bring it into compliance with its underlying zoning district. So, once again, appreciate the consideration and hopefully your support on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there anyone else here to speak to the project on Highway 29? All right, this is in District Nine, so I'll ask for a motion from Commissioner Thornton.
A motion to, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this rezone. I actually drove by there, and I don't see any conflict. That area is really growing. I think this rezone will be an asset and will fit into that area nicely.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton, is there a second? Got a motion from Commissioner Thornton and a second from Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Taylor, any further remarks?
Commissioner Hul? I just wanted to check, I think, do we have to vote on the future land use change first and then the rezone?
Appreciate that, all right. So the motion was for approval of future land use, second, everybody understand that?
All right, the future land use ordinance, an ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to amending the future development map of Athens-Clark County by changing the designation of a parcel of land comprising approximately 18.39 acres located at 1508 US Highway 21 North from rural to general business and for other purposes.
All right, thank you, Attorney Drake. All right, so the motion is for the change in future land use, motion from Commissioner Thornton, second from Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we need a second vote to approve the rezoning with conditions. Is there a motion to that effect, Commissioner?
I'm making a motion also to approve.
All right, we've got a motion again from Commissioner Thornton, second from Commissioner Taylor. Any further remarks?
No, I'm fine.
All in favor? Oh, we've got an ordinance?
Yes, yes, Mayor. An ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning a parcel of land comprising approximately 18.39 acres located at 1508 US Highway 21 North from CR commercial rural to CG commercial general and for other purposes.
Thanks, Attorney Drake. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. All right, we're moving on to item number 24. 24 is 3029 Atlanta Highway. Is anyone here tonight to speak to 3029 Atlanta Highway? Good evening.
Good evening. John Maddox, 1055 Howmel Road, Atlanta, Georgia. Thank you all for allowing us to come before you and present. We are here on behalf, we are the applicant. This is in regards to a 68-unit affordable housing development on Atlanta Highway for residents earning, residents who are 55 years and older, earning between 30% to 70% of their area median income. We're developing in partnership with the Athens Housing Authority. You know, we had some questions last time. If there's anything else, I'm here to answer questions, but otherwise, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Is there anyone else here to speak to 3029 Atlanta Highway? All right, seeing none, this is in Commission District Seven. Turn to Commissioner Culpepper for a motion.
Yes, I make a motion to approve.
All right, we've got a motion again from Commissioner Thornton, second from Commissioner Taylor. Any further remarks?
No, I'm fine.
All in favor? Oh, we've got an ordinance.
Yes, yes, Mayor. An ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning a parcel of land comprising approximately 18.39 acres located at 1508 U.S. Highway 29 North from CR commercial rural to CG commercial general and for other purposes.
Thanks, Attorney Drake. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. All right, we're moving on to item number 24. 24 is 3029 Atlanta Highway. Is anyone here tonight to speak to 3029 Atlanta Highway? Good evening.
Good evening. John Maddox, 1055 Howmel Road, Atlanta, Georgia. Thank you all for allowing us to come before you and present. We are here on behalf, we are the applicant. This is in regards to a 68-unit affordable housing development on Atlanta Highway for residents earning, residents who are 55 years and older, earning between 30% to 70% of the area median income. We're developing in partnership with the Athens Housing Authority. You know, we had some questions last time. If there's anything else, I'm here to answer questions, but otherwise, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Is there anyone else here to speak to 3029 Atlanta Highway? All right, seeing none, this is in Commission District 7. Turn to Commissioner Culpepper for a motion.
Yes, I make a motion to approve.
A second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Culpepper, second from Commissioner Hul. Commissioner Culpepper, any further remarks?
Yes, I'm just excited to see this project get underway, offering 68 units of affordable housing for seniors. I think it'll be a great project and a great addition to that area.
Commissioner Hul, any follow-up?
I echo Commissioner Culpepper fully. I did just want to ask briefly if the applicant could speak to the bus stop question that came up before and whether the plan, my understanding is code requires a bus stop within the vicinity, and, you know, there's not really a good way to access the existing one down the road at Target, and so, is the plan to build one onsite or at the frontage, you know, with G. dot approval, pending G. dot approval?
Yes, that, so, the code does require, if ACC Transit says that we are required to have a bus stop, then we are required to have a bus stop, you know, as part of the zoning. We think that would be a great amenity for our residents. I know that there is one that is over closer to the Target, but there's not sidewalk that gets there, and it's a bit of a walk to get there. We are, you know, we think it would be great for our residents. We're open to working with ACC Transit, so we would love that on our site. It just depends on whether they're able to accommodate it.
Okay, thanks for speaking to that. Yeah, I appreciate, you know, I spoke with Commissioner Culpepper before this, and I think you raised some good points about why, you know, a commission-defined option may not be necessary to mandate it, but I just kind of wanted to state aloud while we're approving it that my hope would be that we do have a bus stop here without taking away the one at Target, because while they're pretty close compared to other bus stops from each other, the people who are going to Target are probably mostly a different population from the people who are going to be coming and going from the senior living facility. And the nature of a senior living facility, I think it's important to have a transit stop there. So, anyway, happy to see it move forward, and thanks for partnering with our housing authority to make it happen.
Any further input from members of the commission? All right, seeing none, I'll ask Attorney Drake to read the ordinance for us.
In order to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to special use approval of ground floor residential units in the CG commercial general district for a parcel of land at 3029 Atlanta Highway comprising approximately 3.78 acres and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. All right, I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Culpepper, a second from Commissioner Hul. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to 200 Tremont Parkway. Is there anyone else here to speak to this project tonight?
Good evening again. Ben Prue with SPG Planners and Engineers out of Wire Park in Watkinsville. Just want to thank you for your consideration in dissolving the unbiddable PD and binding site plan that is currently held on this property that dates back to 1995. We appreciate all the coordination we've had with ACC Planning and the other departments. Also appreciate the unanimous recommendation for approval with the conditions that you all are familiar with from the planning commission. We hope you can all equally support and approve the proposed request. By so doing, allow the project development team to continue to coordinate with ACC Planning and the various departments on creating a by right development site plan that more will have the flexibility to address the site constraints while also meeting all of ACC's RM2 zoning requirements. Appreciate Commissioner Fisher's opportunity and time to meet with him last week and address the questions that he had that also came up in last week's meeting. Just want to point out that the two main questions that had come up was regarding the cemetery on the site, and we're able to kind of help provide some more information on the documentation and the extents of those grave sites and help resolve those concerns, and also the other question regarding whether this would be a student housing project. And as we mentioned, there will be an income requirement, so that will help prevent this from becoming a solely student housing project. So, appreciate the consideration and happy to answer any questions you all may still have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there anyone else here to speak to Tremont Parkway? Seeing none, this is in Commission District 5, so I'll ask Commissioner Fisher to make a motion.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to approve, and I want to thank the developer for meeting with me, and I feel like this is going to be a really good project, going to be for young professionals and perhaps for some families, so, again, I'm going to support to approve this.
Motion from Commissioner Fisher, is there a second?
Some.
All right, I've got a second from Commissioner Davenport. Any follow-up remarks, Commissioner?
We need housing.
All right, we need housing, you heard it. All right. Any other remarks from members of the body? All right, I'll ask Attorney Drake to read the ordinance for us.
In order to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending a planned development, a planned development in the RM-2 mixed density residential planned development district for a parcel of land comprising approximately 68.6 acres and located at 200 Tremont Parkway and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. All right, I've got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Fisher and a second from Commissioner Davenport. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we're moving on to item 26, which is a text amendment expanding the allowances for science research and development uses. I hear a motion for approval from the body.
Motion to approve.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby and a second from Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Hamby, any remarks?
No, just a good opportunity for us to work with the economic development department and see about getting some science research uses into town.
Commissioner Taylor?
I agree with what you said.
Any follow-up from the body? All right, I'll ask Attorney Drake to read the ordinance for us.
In order to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to permitted uses in the C. commercial district and for other purposes.
Thanks, Attorney Drake. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, so we now move on to public input on old and new business, and as a reminder, those are items 5, 6, and 27 through 46. 5, 6, and 27 through 46. If there's anyone here to speak to any older new business item, now is that time. Rules of input are the same as you've heard before. Good evening.
Good evening. Lori Duke, 419 Millet Terrace. I want to encourage support for the adoption of the invasive plant species code revisions, and I want to thank all the commissioners and the city officials for all their hard work on this ordinance change. I did want to respectfully ask, though, that there would be monitoring of the effectiveness of the ordinance once it is put in place, if it is passed, just to make sure that it is effective. It is going to take an entire neighborhood approach to effectively rid the current situation plaguing many of the properties in Athens-Clark County, and so, you just want to make sure that there is not an opportunity for no incentive for particular homeowners to not rid their property and this prevent the effective removal of the invasive species in a large neighborhood setting. So, again, I would request that the ordinance put forth be approved, and again, thank you so much for your work on this.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak to any item of old or new business? Just let us know the item you're speaking to, your name and place of residence.
Louis District 1, here to talk about the invasive species ordinance. I really appreciate it as it's written, but I was hoping we could also include a portion to ban the sale of invasive species in Clark County. Several other counties have done that. South Carolina has banned Bradford pears as an entire state, and so, it is completely possible, but one big issue we will have with controlling invasive species, if they are still for sale at lows, like, for example, bamboo and ivy are for $1.89. Some people will not know and will install more, and we will be right back here with issues about controlling the species. So, I just ask for that to be considered as well. I believe California as a state has also implemented a ban of certain sales of species, of invasive plants, and so has Hawaii, so there is precedence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Anyone else here to speak to old and new business? Good evening.
Good evening. Shannon McCullough, 105 Go Run Athens. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the Chamber of Commerce ARPA proposal that you may vote on tonight, although I appreciate and respect everyone on that committee that has worked so hard and will probably come up here and speak to you. I'm asking that you table this item for now in hopes that they will reconsider bringing in smaller organizations that on a daily basis are doing workforce development, like Dr. Allen's Innovative Healthcare and Bread for Life. Their proposal left out these types of organizations, and we would like for you to consider tabling it so that they could reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. My name is John Banzel. I am the Vice President of Operations for National EMS. We are located at 1021 Lampkin Branch Road in Watkinsville. I come to you tonight as a representative of our agency and a proud partner in this community. National's been serving this community since 2009, and we continue to look forward to growing and developing that relationship. We did see that you are working on a memorandum of agreement with Piedmont Athens Regional Medical Center, who you actually contract with, then they contract with us as part of the EMS zoning agreements within the state of Georgia. One of the concerning items that we wanted to bring to the commission's attention within the proposed memorandum of agreement, National EMS is very happy with what has been proposed with data reporting, et cetera, and we're very happy to be open and transparent, especially with response times, performance, et cetera. However, in the addendum that was added to the potential agreement, it does say in Attachment 3, it adds the following notes to the bottom of the chart for system key performance indicators. One of the items is they noted that advanced life support ambulance is used for response to 911 calls. Shall be staffed with one Georgia-certified paramedic and one Georgia-certified EMT intermediate. The problem with that is intermediates are a dinosaur and they are a dying breed. As a matter of fact, if you want to become an intermediate EMT at this point in time, you cannot in the state of Georgia. It's no longer a licensing level that is being taught or produced. It has been replaced with the EMT Advanced. Currently, there are 168 EMT intermediates licensed within Region 10, which is the region that we do EMS business in, and 273 As. Out of those, only 63 are actually active intermediates. This would therefore put a hamper on being able to deliver ambulance service properly within the agreement that is shown and has been proposed, rather. We currently have 375 paramedics that work in this area and over 1,100 EMT basics, which currently staff the ambulance. Everything else is written. We have no qualms about, like I said, our transparency, to be an open company is as much as we want to be a good community partner. We also, when it comes to be, absolutely agree that we should be extrapolating from patients' insurance and not taking the tax money as we are being a good partner. Our recommendation would be to table this amendment on the agenda until we can meet with you guys as a crew with National. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Banzo. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. First, thank you for what you do. I know that y'all spend a lot of time running this wonderful county, and we want to just thank you for that. My name is Michael Burnett. I'm with Piedmont Athens Regional, 1199 Prince Avenue, and also the current Chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, and want to speak on thanking y'all for considering the workforce development ARPA funds. We have a huge opportunity here to really address workforce development, not only from middle school up through high school graduates, but to those that are able and willing to work. The problem we have is we need to connect them to these jobs and how, what training, what workforce you need there. In healthcare, there are different certifications that are required, there are different things that you have to have to get in there, but people don't understand that, and when we can start using our navigators here to connect them with that, we can fill some valuable and highly paid jobs in our community and get them on a pathway that can be generational change as well. So, we're excited about that. One of the things that we're already doing is we're going to partner with the College Career Academy and through our foundation donate $35,000 to get their anatomy lab going so that we can help students graduate with certifications, and then we can hire them to continue their training on in different pathways. That's just one example in healthcare, but when you look across the businesses in our community, there's definitely a need there. I also just want to address the MOU with our EMS service, and the goal there is really transparency, is to make sure that, you know, with the opportunities there to present what's going on. I do think there was a couple of questions about some of the data requirements, so either way, we're very close, and I'm supportive of that initiative too, and working with each of y'all to highlight what our great EMS folks are doing in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Any further input on old and new business? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Clark, and I live at 225 Oak Grove Road, District 6. I am here to, one, speak on behalf of not the establishments that were given funding for workforce development, but however, the ones that were not. If you look at Google and see what Athens is known for, is known for is vibrant city, entertainment, tourism, UGA, all the great things, but however, if you look at a biblical content in the hall that happens, it says, "Look out amongst you and find just men." I worked at the Labor Department for years, and which I retire here. When someone came there and said they didn't like their job or even on inside staff, I would always tell them, "The building is full of resources." So, what I'm asking is that you all be the just men that the community reached out to to oversee what goods come to the people. Now, there were small businesses that were not included. I am a supporter of UGA, Athentech, Piedmont, all of the businesses that were included, but however, there are ground root businesses that are currently serving the children, that are serving the teenagers, the Gen Z or Gen Xers, the senior citizens, but however, they were left off the list. So, what I'm pleading is that as just men and women that were elected to oversee, to assure that all the people in the Bible says, widows and children, that they each get their fair portion of what they deserve. Now, I'm partial to some of the agency Bread for Life, one, because we get them at an early age, and we try to train them so they will be ready for the workforce. Now, we have all of these businesses that are coming here, we have an arena. However, Athens is full of people that are from neighborhoods. When we were growing up, there was nothing in the neighborhood that we did not have. We are not connecting with the people that make UGA, make Piedmont, make all of these big institute run because nobody is connecting. Neighborhood leaders are nothing new. There have always been neighborhood leaders, but however, they're not getting the resources to sit on the porch and talk with the children, penetrate the neighborhood of the people who are going to make Athens a vibrant city. So, when we get tourism, when we get new students, when we get all of these people, we'll have a workforce that's ready to receive them. We have to get our city ready for the growth, for the economic development, and if the workforce development plan is what we all are looking at to make that happen.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
We got to include the people who are already working in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sterling Gardner, 1129 Oak Grove Road, Athens. I'm here to speak in support of the Athens Achieve proposal that has been put together by the Chamber of Commerce. First of all, let me say that there, I think there's $4 million left in the designated pot for the services under workforce development, and as Shannon talked about with Dr. Shanice Allen and the innovative health, we fully support that they should get some funding. As a matter of fact, 14 young people from the Boys and Girls Clubs of Athens just this week went through her program and received this week went through her program and received certifications in CPR. So it is a very worthwhile project and program and worthy of funding. The Athens Achieve project, however, does not take up all of the funding and I would urge that the Commission, if they do approve the Athens Achieve project, that they move swiftly to help other agencies to be part of the workforce development arena. But we spent a lot of time going around to Tuscaloosa, Alabama for the past two or three years and we find that, we think that we have a infrastructure now coordinated here in Athens through Athens Achieves to kind of resemble that project. And I think that many of you have taken those trips to Alabama to be able to see what they're doing in workforce development in Tuscaloosa. And I think it would be an shame to waste the opportunity to do something great for our community that's shovel-ready. I think we only have a few more months to, again, to allocate all of the funds in the workforce development pot so that I ask that you do that. Even according to our Athens Clark County Economic Development website, the largest segment of our population, 26%, is between the ages of 18 and 24. Adding young people under 18, you will find that over 43% of the population of Athens Clark County is under age 25. When we talk about juvenile crimes committed by young adults, one of the best ways to stop this alarming trend is to prepare students academically to graduate and train them to be productive citizens. Athens Achieves has put together a comprehensive plan based on that Alabama Works model that will do just that. We now have an opportunity to implement a plan that most of us in this room agree will work and we have the resources to do so. While the plan does not address every single workforce issue, it is shovel-ready and worthy for your consideration and I hope that you will please vote in favor of the Athens Achieve proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Is there anyone else here to speak to old or new business this evening?
Good evening. Connie Stodding for the CEO of the Athens Housing Authority. I just wanted to come on behalf of the board and thank you all for your continued support for our projects, not just Classic City Heights, but also Indy Athens Downtown Project, soon to be known as The View at Noda. I hope you all have driven by because it's really coming out of the ground beautifully there. I also want to thank Manager Williams, Assistant Manager Jones, and Attorney Drake because they, these are very complicated deals and honestly, they work tirelessly to find a way to make these work and it's not lost on us whatsoever. And so, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Stodding. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Battle, 1611 Linton Way. I am an Athens native. I'm here on behalf of Goodwill North Georgia where our mission is simply to put people to work and I serve as Senior Director for Mission Partnerships. And today, my focus is to support the Chamber of Commerce's Athens Achieve proposal in which Goodwill has contributed as a sub-grantee for second chance training. This grant will deliver and expand career services in our East Athens location, that's 4070 Lexington Road, where we serve over 3,000 people annually, helping them find work. With an agency with nearly 100, 100 years of workforce development knowledge, we know that workforce development is not just about technical skills. It involves providing support for personal development, work support, soft skills mentorship, counseling, financial literacy coaching, digital skills training, and overcoming so many other barriers that I can't even begin to mention. These efforts largely represent individuals who are in the untapped labor pool. I've heard so much about that tonight. But with the right training and support in all of the community partners who I've heard tonight, I know that we can help our community become that premier workforce group. Goodwill has extensive experience developing workforce development programs which include case management, career coaching, soft skill instruction, industry-recognized occupational skills training such as CDL, retention services, and employment assistance for individuals with employment barriers caused by mental health, physical, emotional, and developmental disabilities, limited job skills, poverty, homelessness, substance abuse, and other challenges like justice involved. Our success at Goodwill lies in the connection between partnerships like the Chamber of Commerce who will bring in key employers for high-wage jobs. And we also collaborate with, again, all of the partners who've talked tonight to provide our work support services. And this is what I really want you to listen to because it's very important to have a true workforce development and that's transportation, childcare, healthcare, education, clothing, housing, and nutrition for that untapped labor pool. Through our work and experience at Goodwill and partnerships like the Chamber and some of the, as I said, others in the room, we help thousands of individuals yearly with barriers to, to become highly productive employees and citizens of our community. And I want to say this is the secret sauce to building that healthy and productive workforce. You've got to have your work supports and we're here to provide that. One example, a few years ago, our agency successfully led and administered a federally grant project for reentry programs. And not only did these programs meet and exceed established outcomes, but the individuals that we served and provided the work supports, they had less than a 2% recidivism rate for the youth that we served and 14.8% for the adults that we served. And that's something to really stand out. In closing, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Battle. Good evening.
Arizona, Wentzville, Georgia. I just want to say, when I first came to work in Georgia, I worked at the Department of Labor. It's quite true what Ms. Clark said, there's a ton of resources. When I read what this youth development was going to do with the Chamber of Commerce, I compared that with what the Department of Labor does and what I remember having done. And I don't really think there's a huge difference. I don't, I would like to see more funding to organizations like the Bread of Life and Dr. Allen's program because, just to let you know, Dr. Allen's program, not only did she have a lot of students there, she had students that didn't speak English. She called me, she asked me if I could translate. I did some classes where I translated and then she hired from her own funds to get another translator. And these people graduated and got jobs. So there's innovative concepts that are out there trying to get people to graduate, get certificates, and get jobs. So I would ask you to please consider those two programs because actually, if you look at what the, what the Department of Labor does, and I challenge you to look at what they do, because I don't think a lot of people know what they do, and you look at every little program that they have, it's very compatible. I don't see why we need another structure to go through the same things that some other organization is doing. But if you look at these other two programs, I would ask you to please hold off and see how you can incorporate those other two programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stodding.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Walker Cadel, 1010 Allgood Road, Athens, Georgia. With Truist Bank, serve as the market president here locally with the bank and speaking here on behalf of the Athens Achieve Program with the Athens Chamber of Commerce. I also serve as the committee head for the Education and Workforce Development Committee with the Chamber and have served in that capacity for two to three years. We're really excited about what we've got kind of proposed here and like many of you have seen in Tuscaloosa, I think, you know, Alicia mentioned the secret sauce. The secret sauce of what we saw out there was collaboration and that's something that we as a community get a bad rap for sometimes. So we think that in collaborating with both business leaders, educational leaders, and service providers that we've already enlisted, that we can really make this an effective and meaningful program. The, the big thing that we need is the ARPA funding on the front end to, one, get us off the ground, but then, two, we, our plan is to make this a sustainable plan that is self-supporting down the road. But what we found and what we saw in kind of the case study of what we did with Tuscaloosa is if you do not have a point person, which they had, that was super important to their, their efforts, it's really going to be, have a hard time succeeding with just being a secondary role of whoever it is that's kind of helping get this thing off the ground. So we ask you to consider strongly voting in, in favor of this and thank you for everybody's time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cadel. Good evening.
My name's Tony Ferguson with Georgia Power Company. We're located at 1004 Boulevard in Athens. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of Athens Achieve, the workforce development program. In my role with Georgia Power, I get to work with many communities across northeast Georgia and across the state of Georgia, many of whom are trying to address the issue of workforce development. Workforce development drives economic development, which in turn drives our community's growth. Athens Achieve is a workforce development program that is designed to execute solutions through partnerships to grow and strengthen the workforce in Athens Clark County and to positively impact people's lives. At Georgia Power, we've partnered with the Carl Vinson Institute at the University of Georgia to study workforce development and workforce development initiatives across the state. And through that work, we have found several principles related to workforce development to be true. At the simplest level, workforce development is about connecting individuals to jobs in the local economy. It involves many partners and programs aimed at helping students, job seekers, and employees gain the skills required to fill the current and future employment opportunities. Workforce development is a pipeline that leads from education and training to a successful career. A variety of government, business, community, education, and nonprofit organizations are critical to workforce development success and each partner makes a distinct contribution to the overall process. An example of this, our Georgia Power Foundation just two weeks ago announced a $50,000 donation to the Athens Community Career Academy and that is in support of the new biomedical pathway that they're establishing. Workforce development is a long-term proposition, a clear and mutually agreed-upon plan can help a community stay focused on the investments and programs which are required for success. Athens has such a workforce development plan and it's called Athens Achieve. It's a joint initiative between business, industry, education, nonprofits, and local government to provide a pipeline of skilled workers to the current and future businesses in Athens Clark County. It's a well-thought-out plan that incorporates education, training, compassion, inclusion, and accountability in a coordinated set of actions and investments that seek to meet the workforce-related needs of Athens Clark County. By approving the funding requested for Athens Achieve, this Commission will help provide a clear pathway and pipeline for workforce development. It will provide mutual benefits for employees and employers. It will have a generational impact on improving the lives of Athens Clark County residents and it will distinguish Athens Clark County from other communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Is there anyone else here to speak to old or new business this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Michael McLendon, 201-9 Hamilton Road, Athens. I'd like to speak briefly to items 34 and 35. I think we've heard a lot tonight about workforce development, but I'm here to recommend that you table this item and here's why. I've heard a lot of pontypical statements and visions about workforce and all, but I've never heard a clear statement of the specific problem that needs to be solved. I hear visionary statements that are akin to, "Our goal is to go solve world hunger." I have no earthly idea how to do that and I have no earthly idea how anybody could achieve what they glorify tonight. They've talked about a plan, but there is no plan of actions and milestones. There are no definitive criteria. There is no evaluation criteria because there are no performance measures. What this is, is just give us money and we will go create another nonprofit like Athens needs another nonprofit and we'll figure out what we want to go do with the money. If I was back in the federal government, I would label this waste and abuse of federal dollars. So I encourage you to table this and take some time to go figure out what is really needed, if anything, because right now, unemployment in Athens Clark County is 2.5% and the labor force participation rate is about the same as the national. So I'm really not sure what the problem is that needs to be solved. Second of all, on the youth development violence prevention, a couple of the Commissioners while back asked me about this. So I spent some time looking at the performance measures for this on the ARPA dashboard. And after spending a good bit of time, I wrote you an email about that. And quite frankly, I know the science, I know math, I know how to do program evaluation. And as I went through all of the color charts and everything else, the only thing I could figure out is y'all spent a whole bunch of money, but it's not clear what you got in return because there's no consistency whatsoever in terms of how these programs were evaluated and what was done. So my caution to you is, as you move forward with anything that has to do with youth development and violence prevention, you need to go back to the basics and say, "What is the specific problem that we're trying to solve?" Rather than just throwing money out to nonprofits and they'll go do whatever that they want to do. And finally, just let me mention Resolution 44. I understand the sentiment behind that, but I also think of all the other people, including Navia Brown a year or so ago, who lost her eye. She's not mentioned in here.
Thank you, Mr. McLendon. Is there anyone else here to speak to old or new business this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Shanice Allen, 130 Meredith Ridge Road. I'm here today to express my concerns regarding the ARPA workforce development funds. Athens Clark County Government received $57.6 million to address the pandemic's impact and build a stronger, more equitable economy. I got that from your website. What have we done to achieve this goal? Have we used the funds wisely? I have, I have serious reservations about the proposed allocation of the ARPA workforce funds. A Commissioner informed me that my name was included in a proposal. Yet, as a workforce provider, I was neither aware or nor included in the decision-making process, along with many other experienced workforce development providers in our community. Some seem to forget that workforce development is about helping those who need work now with employment so that they can take care of their families and their needs, just as much as it is for the employer. This week, a group of workforce development providers met with a couple of Commissioners and David Bradley to voice concerns about the exclusion of workforce providers in the proposal that was presented. How much longer can our community members hold on? People are paying $450 to $500 a week to stay in a substandard motel. How do I know? Because my students do. And many are living in their cars. How do I know? Because my students do. These are the individuals who need workforce development assistance to support themselves and their families. Accountability for our actions today rests with us. If 10 years from now, there is a decrease in the number of children in the school district and an issue with many employers finding workers, it will be due to the decisions made here tonight. Many from our beloved community will be forced to leave. Tonight, carefully consider the decisions before you. With only a few million dollars remaining, it is crucial that we allocate these funds to support those in crisis who need workforce training, support, and guidance. I urge you to consider an alternative that supports those in our community who need workforce assistance now. those in our community who need workforce assistance now. Adopting a plan from Alabama with promises of high-paying positions to those carrying out the proposal funded by dollars meant for the people is not the solution. Let's focus on providing immediate practical support to those in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Earl Went. I am a plant manager at Caterpillar here in Athens at 250 Dozer Drive. I'm here to speak a little bit about the Athens Achieve and our support for that program, since we are the beneficiaries of workforce development. We've been engaged in some of the investigations and see how a company like ours would benefit and how the funding of this program would not just help today, which it will, but prepare us for tomorrow. Someone spoke about the unemployment rate today at 2.5%, and that may be great. And we need to help those 2.5%, but we need to prepare for tomorrow, because if you don't have a workforce that's prepared for tomorrow, that 2.5% will get higher. The work that people do is changing, and we need to start to fund the knowledge and skills to keep up with the workforce, to keep up with the work, with the technology. The funding is needed to start that now.
Thank you, Mr. Went. Good evening.
Good evening. Dylan Woolsey, 395 River Road, here to speak on Agenda Item 43, which is also the budget. This budget, which I recently saw the proposal for, which would fully fund the affordable housing plans, proposed $5 million, and I would like you to adopt this. Who would this benefit? It would benefit many of our cost-burden renters, as well as homeowners. And how many of these cost-burden people do we have in Athens? I'll tell you. According to the census, we have 1,323 in Alps Road neighborhood, 1,014-10 in Barnett Shoals, 3,359 in Barrow, 894 on Chase Street, 291 Cleveland Road, 486 Fowler, 1,170 in Gaines, 1,553 in Howard and B. Stroud, 141 in Julia Jackson Harris, 1,239 in Maxine Pinsum Esim, 637 on Oglethorpe Avenue, 522 in Payne, 1,334 on Timothy Road, 363 on Whit Davis, 382 on Whitehead Road, and 419 in Winterville. All these people are, according to the census, cost-burden, meaning they pay over 30% of their monthly income on housing expenses. As your current proposal, in terms of affordable housing, fully funding that plan will drastically improve their lives. Will drastically make sure that they're able to afford either their rent, which much is, which will be improved as much of the affordable housing plan goes to building more housing, which will decrease their rents, as we see in other cities across the state, other states across the nation, and other nations across the globe. The most surefire way, the best way to decrease the rapid growth of housing costs and rents is to build more housing. As well, there's money out, in the affordable housing plan, there's money allocated for, that would help with homeowners staying in their homes, especially with the homeowner repair funds as well. So I'm very appreciative that you'll, we're able to come to an agreement on fully funding the affordable housing plan, and I very much hope you adopt it. And as a brief aside, just wanted to speak about what Athens and good governance means. Good governance means that we need, that the government, including the mayor and commission, needs to implement policies that benefit the most people as possible. This policy, fully funding this affordable housing plan, would benefit the most people as possible in Athens. I've been coming for the past months each meeting to speak in this rural plan, because I know, and I really hope, that you'll use the available body of evidence to make the decision that will benefit the most people, and that's what good governance means. And I really hope that you can be a shining example to other cities across the nation, other cities across, across the state, of how to be a good govern, how to be a good government, and help as much people as we can as a government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woolsey. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Johnson, Athens, Georgia. I'm speaking in regard to item number 34. If I was a recipient, I would also support the chamber's workforce plan too, but I want to speak about the community members that I've spoken to recently over the last five to seven days. Each of these community members reached out to their respective commissioners about the additional details related to this proposal and funding award. Almost everybody that I spoke with received the following response. "We've been talking about this project with the chamber for almost two years. The misleading detail related to that statement is the fact that you've only been talking about it." I am aware that some of you, I'm sorry, I am aware that residents have asked for specific details related to the actual plan from two years ago. In May 2023, the mayor and commission transferred funds to hire an additional consultant to conduct a workforce development strategic plan. Where can people obtain a copy of the written plan? No one who requested received anything, and everybody was referred to review tonight's agenda. What it looks like, if it's not already clear, is that this funding award decision has not gone through a transparent process. What I mean is exercising the verb transparency. Because I attend many meetings and I also watch meetings online, I don't dispute the fact that there was a conversation, many conversations regarding the trip to Tuscaloosa two years ago. But I can't continue without stating the obvious, that there seems to be a rush to award this organization, and the members of the community are not afforded a reason. Further, when other members of our community, who are also in the health and human services profession, try to provide or offer slash contribute to our community, they are discouraged. I'll define discouraged. Many organizations and professionals are told to wait and work with the land trust. Many are told to work with the Boys and Girls Club. Many are told to wait a year or two. Some are even told to scale back what was requested, and we'll see if we can find some money for you from somewhere down the road. Every example I just mentioned, let me state this, 100% of those people did not receive funding from those other entities that they were referred to. If you would like the names of those organizations and/or individuals, I will ask for permission and will be happy to provide that information, so you know I'm not vacillating up here. I'm telling the truth. I want the leadership to refrain from using transparency as a soundbite. Instead, simply improve transparency in a very deliberate way. If you don't have all the answers, and you have to ask the manager, or the assistant manager, or the county attorney for further information in the middle of the meeting, that means you don't have all the information.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
It is not lost on us that by the time this meeting comes around, like tonight, all of a sudden, many of you have figured it out, and you are able to make a confident decision.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We need to move on to work.
But there's a loophole in the communication. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak to old or new business this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. John Marsh, 310 Holman Avenue. I want to speak briefly to what's going on with item number 43, and really, it's all, all of these items where people have come to you and they're asking for money and all of that. Roughly 174 years ago, Frederick Bastiat wrote a piece, "That Which Is Seen and That Which Is Not Seen." And so people have come and spoken to you about the things that are seen. See this thing over here, see this thing over there. What is not seen is all of the things that aren't done because money is taken, is given to them. People aren't doing things over here. These are the things that are not seen. I want to take off of Mr. McLendon's comments, where he was saying that you need to have measures of what is success. So with these programs, and really with any spending, what is the measure, what, how are we going to define success? Is, are we spending $10,000 to make $1,000? I wouldn't consider that to be a success. You have other things that you provide a little bit of money, and you have great success. But I think as you make all of these decisions, you need to remember the things that which are seen and the things which are not seen, and you especially need to pay for the, pay attention to the things that are not seen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Are there any more remarks from the public regarding old or new business? All right. We're going to move to commission action, and we will begin with...
Can we take our 8:15 break?
Commission's requesting a break. We'll go ahead and take a break for 10 minutes until 8:51. 8:51. All right, welcome back, everyone. Thank you for recording us a short break in the evening's proceedings. We're going to go ahead and continue with old and new business, and we're going to begin with item number five, which is the magistrate court associate judge FY-24 supplement amendment. And Commissioner Hamby asked that this be removed. So I'm going to ask Commissioner Hamby to make a motion and make any remarks he would like to regarding that motion.
Sure, I appreciate it, Mayor. And I'm going to just make a motion to approve the request that came to us from May 17th for an appropriation of $45,710 to FY-24 operating budget for magistrate court compensation supplemental unauthorized staff to amend the supplement amounts of the two associate judges. And also request Mayor approve A and B of the commission action requested.
Second.
I second it.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, a second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Thornton, any follow-up regards?
No, I do know that this has been dragging on for longer than some of us even know. I think this is again, it's long overdue, and I do appreciate the court's patience working, waiting on us to get it right. So, that's all, sir.
Any further remarks from any member of the body? All right, there's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Hamby. There's a second from Commissioner Thornton. We have an ordinance against this, a budget amendment, so I'm going to turn to Attorney Drake for that.
An ordinance to amend the FY-2024 annual operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide additional funding for magistrate court compensation supplemental and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. We're going to move on to item number six. My turn to you for a motion, Commissioner Hamby.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. And I'll be real quick. I just want to make a motion to approve the request from the courts from May 16th, that appropriation of $69,479 to the FY-24 operating budget for Superior Court compensation to help with the supplement amounts of the two state paid attorneys. And along with that, adopt an ordinance for B, doing such. And I'll just say this, I mean certainly, certainly appreciate the courts in bringing this to our attention, and appreciate staff for also giving us more food for thought. And I just think what we're, what the motion here allows us to do is to, is to, is to correct an oversight. And moving forward, I think we'll be able to move forward in a good way that is good for supplemental pay for our courts. And I know we'll be talking about that in probably the next, next voting session. So, anyway, that's my motion, and appreciate you hearing me out.
Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Taylor. Thank you. Commissioner Taylor, any follow-up remarks?
No, sir.
Any remarks from other member of the body? There's a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Mayor, ordinance.
We need an ordinance read from Attorney Drake. Thank you for that.
An ordinance to amend the FY-2024 annual operating and capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide additional funding for Superior Court compensation supplemental and for other purposes.
Thank you. And just to affirm, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we're going to move to item number 27. This is the ordinance related to invasive plant species. Believe Commissioner Myers, this went through your committee, so I'm going to call on you for the invasive plant species ordinance.
That's what we were talking about.
Right, I want to make a motion to pass this.
Second.
And then I'd like to speak to it for a second.
All right, please do.
Yeah, we're going to, we are moving this out of the LRC where we have worked on developing a definition of invasive species that did not exist, so that homeowners now have a way to address any invasive species plants that grow onto their property. And so I'm happy to finally get this out of committee and get us to vote on this. I do ask that the mayor return it to the LRC in a year's time, just for reporting purposes, so we can get an overview of how the policy has been working, and to see if there need to be any adjustments.
All right, I'd be glad to do that at that time.
Thank you.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Myers, and a second from Commissioner Hamby.
Excuse, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make one, one, offer one sort of maybe amendment to the, to the main motion that may, that's made, and maybe in addressing some of these that perhaps within the year.
I just said that.
You just said that.
Don't blame me.
So, okay, so within a year, we'll review it and go from there.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers.
Yeah.
I was distracted. It's easy to get distracted on this rotunda.
I completely understand, and I'll ask Clerk Spratlin to remind me a year from now that we will be returning this to committee for a report.
Mayor, may I have one more comment? I just wanted to address the fact that we did have members of the ACC staff who did talk about educating the public about the invasive species, you know, the importance of combating them, alternatives to them. And so I do know that there's staff, will be staff who will be working on that, and that all those, those items that are on that invasive species list, list, we'll make sure that they are no longer on approved plantings for new developments as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to go ahead and have Attorney Drake read the ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's actually two ordinances that were required, two places the code had to be amended in respect to implementing these new regulations. The first is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to control of vegetation and for other purposes. And the second is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to nuisance abatement and other, other purposes. Those changes are, the first one's in section 3-5-9, related to control of vegetation of the code of ordinances, and the second related to nuisance abatement is in section 3-13-2.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. Any further remarks from members of the body? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to item 28, which is the criteria for fire station number five. Is there anyone who would like to place a motion on the floor regarding this item?
Motion to, motion to approve.
All right, I've got a motion to approve from Commissioner Davenport. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport, and a second from Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Davenport, any further remarks?
I would like to thank management for sitting down, answering the questions that I have. I've spoken with an overwhelming vast majority of neighborhoods and residents, and explaining to them the fire department's response concerns, as well as expressing their concerns as well. It is a process that we have to go through again, and I look forward to moving forward.
Commissioner Myers, any follow-up?
I'm good.
Any further remarks? All right, there's a motion from Commissioner Davenport, and a second from Commissioner Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we're moving on to item number 29, the ACC GOV transit substance abuse policy. Do I hear a motion from the body?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Hamby, and a second from Commissioner Hool. Make a note of that. Commissioner Hamby, any remarks?
No, sir.
Commissioner Hool?
I'll just thank staff for following up on the questions we had last meeting and noting that, you know, this is a policy that we have to have include some of the things in here we might not otherwise because of federal mandates. I'm glad to move it forward.
Anything further? All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, item 30 is the correction offender healthcare services contract. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Hamby, and I have a second from Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Hamby, anything on this item?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Taylor, anything else from members of the body? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, seeing none, motion carries. All right, item number 31 is the mental health patient transportation program. It's a contact, contract cost increase. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion for support from Commissioner Hamby, and a second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Hamby, anything on this?
No, sir.
Commissioner Thornton?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Mayor, if I might?
Please, Manager Williams.
I direct you to the last page of that agenda item, and just want to make sure it segues with your, the budget CDO. There are a couple of budget ordinances associated with this ask from the sheriff's office. One is to request $92,000 from unassigned fund balance to cover the expenses from FY-24, which I would recommend. Another is to request $200,000 from next year's operating contingency to up that contract for next year. I don't believe that's currently in the budget ordinance. And what I would say is, I'm not saying that that is not a worthy request, but this is a variable contract based on the number of transports conducted, so it's not clear that you will need that funding absolutely next year. But based on past experience, you most likely will. So you can go ahead and reserve those funds for next year tonight, but I don't believe that amount is currently in the budget CDO. So I just want to call that to your attention.
Sure. And is this a situation, Manager Williams, where we could do a budget amendment if those are needed next year?
Yes, that would be very similar to what I agree with the sheriff's request for the 92,000.
Right.
Because those transports have happened this year. It is in excess of the allocated funds.
Right.
And so I think they're, it's very appropriate for, and it's not, nothing's unappropriate, let me just be clear. But you would be reserving, they're asking for extra capacity next year based on past performance, and in all likelihood, you'll need that. But for right now, we don't know for sure. And so I know that the money's at a premium right now for things you're trying to accomplish. So you're, you're sort of betting on the future if you do that, and you'll need to reconcile it with your, your current budget proposal.
Thank you for that, Manager Williams. All right, everybody has that clear?
I think so.
All right, we've got a motion and a second.
I'm not sure I do, actually.
Well, there's two, there are two ordinances, Mr. Mayor, and I think what the manager is saying is, the first one's for FY-24. You need, we need to approve, and I'm aware this matter had conversation with sheriff's service has been rendered, we have a duty to provide this service, we need to pay it. The second one, though, is actually for FY-25, which you're, I was going to suggest if we approve this one, that you do it subject to approval of the budget later tonight, because you haven't adopted the FY-25 budget yet, because it's an ordinance to amend the budget. I do think it's highly likely you'll need these funds, but you do need to prove the, we need to, you've got to have the FY-25 budget in place. But you certainly can do that, the manager says, and wait.
Well, you could do it tonight. What, what it would just be is the first obligation against general fund contingency in FY-25.
Right.
Which you can do that tonight, or you can wait and see how things turn out. It's your choice. It's not wrong. And again, the sheriff's telegraphing, sheriff's office is telegraphing that in all likelihood, based on past performance, it will be.
Well, and the money's there in the, in the contingency. I think there's 1.2 there. So if it's needed, they could always have another agenda item to, to tap into that.
That would be my understanding.
Right, thank you.
So Attorney Drake, do you need to read that ordinance now?
In ordinance to amend the FY-2024 annual operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, so as to provide additional funding for mental health patient transportation services in the Clark County Sheriff's Office and for other purposes. Do you want me to read the other?
Commissioner Hool?
Do you want me to read the other ordinance, or we're, or not?
And, and just in terms of the motion on the floor, are you anticipating that we will return in the midst of FY-25, or would you like to go ahead and make the motion to include?
I think returning in FY-25 probably makes more sense since we, since, since this become out of contingency, contingencies already in the budget. So I think, I think that makes more sense.
So does that mean approving A and B, but not C? A, B, D, no C? Or is it just B and D, and no C?
Well, I believe, and I know we have sheriff's office representatives here, I believe if you approve A, then you're, you're raising the ceiling for the contract for the incoming year, and therefore, you know, that they could charge to that. One B is a specific making the sheriff's office whole so that they can pay the vendor for what has actually occurred. One C is, you know, going ahead and allocating some of the general fund contingency for that purpose. So there's really three different things going on if I'm explaining that correctly. So you can go ahead and raise the contract for next year, but if we have a contract with the vendor, and it's, and it's a variable delivery, you know, it's not as if the government won't pay them for those extra, but you'll just have to do it at the time in a timely manner so the vendor continues to provide those services. So I hope that makes sense. What I would, I would definitely recommend is one B. That needs to be done. If you, if you want to go ahead and expand the capacity of it for next year, and you can do that with one A, I would recommend you hold off on one C at this time. But at a minimum, I would recommend one B.
I think, I will say, just based on my office's conversations with the sheriff, I think expanding the capacity is necessary. I mean, they're, that's what they're running again up to. I mean, I, we're working with him on that, so I don't know if someone's here from the sheriff's department to speak to that, but that's my recollection. Austin Jackson's actually been working directly with that, but he's been talking to me about it.
Following up, Commissioner Hool?
Yeah, so my two-parter, one is an ask of the, my colleagues on the motion on the floor to approve A, B, and D, but hold off on C would be my, my request if they're amenable. In my mind, what I'm hearing from the manager, I think it makes sense to send the message that we're, you know, there's room for this to go, for the ceiling to go up, because, I mean, as we've heard repeatedly, as we know, unfortunately, the jail population is almost certainly going to increase due to mandates that the state government has put on us around cash bail, and not allowing for UJRs and things. And we also know that a majority of people who come through the jail have behavioral health needs, severe mental health issues. So it seems entirely reasonable to expect that the cost will go up, and I think it makes sense to signal that, you know, we're, we're anticipating that. But actually allocating the funding later in the year if and when it's necessary would make sense to me. So if the motioners are amenable to that change, I would be in support of it fully. I did also have one question of finance staff and/or the manager. The 92,000 coming from unassigned fund balance, we've talked a lot about unassigned fund balance in our budget CDO. So if we're awarding that here, are we still in good shape to be whole with the budget CDO as presented without dipping below the, the minimum threshold required for reserve?
Yes. Yes, so one A is just expanding the capacity of the contract, as the attorney alluded to, which, you know, allows for that charging of it. One A is making them whole from unassigned fund balance for this year, and...
One, one B is making them whole for FY-24.
One B, sorry.
So that, I just wanted to make sure that there is enough funds for us to do that and not mess up the forthcoming agenda. Okay, so, so yeah, I just like question for Commissioner Hamby then, if, if Mayor, if he's willing to.
Yes.
Agree.
Certainly, yes.
So one A, B, and D is what we're looking at?
Right.
Okay, everybody got that? A, B, and D, correct. Attorney Drake, you've read the ordinance, correct?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, moving on to item number 32. This is the revised EMS MOU with Piedmont Athens Regional Medical Center, for which we provide $100,000 supplement to them annually. Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion to hold this until next Friday.
All right, motion from Commissioner Myers to hold until Friday the 14th?
Fourteenth.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Myers to hold until the 14th. Second from Commissioner Wright. Any remarks, Commissioner Myers?
No, I just want to have time to adjust the commission-defined option wording for some of that criteria. And Mr. Banzel from National reached out during the break with his card. I hope to follow up with him to clarify some of that language, and hopefully, we can have something ready by next Friday.
Okay. Commissioner Wright, any further?
Ready to vote.
All right, further questions or remarks from group? All in favor of the hold, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we will see this week from Friday. All right, next item is the Government Operations Business Inclusion Policy. Can I hear a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport.
Second.
Who had the second?
That would be me.
All right, second from Commissioner Hamby. Commissioner Davenport, any remarks?
Yes, okay, so there's some confusion in the community about what this does and what it doesn't do, but just a brief overview, because I know it's getting late, it's a brief overview, because I know it's getting late. So we had a WNBE, we had an NBE program about a decade ago, but due to funding or whatever, it was, it was terminated, but, you know, with new laws in place to qualify for an NBE program, we had to do a study. We went through a study, and the study group said, okay, yeah, we definitely have some issues when it comes to minority women contracting, and these are parameters in which you can institute a WNBE program that doesn't violate state or federal law. We, I do want to thank staff and thank my colleagues on GOC for getting this done. It is not the, you know, the perfect thing, but we do have modification and parameters to review this and come out to make any changes. We do have some contracts that are coming up, because we've got some SPOS projects, and I would love to see more people of color to have the opportunity to take part of that, but to delay any further would hinder the success of minority contractors from getting those contracts.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Hamby, any further?
No, sir, I think Commissioner Davenport described it well.
Any follow-up remarks from any other member of the commission? All right, there's a motion from Commissioner Davenport and a second from Commissioner Hamby. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item 34 is the American Rescue Plan Act Workforce Development Strategic Plan. Do I hear a motion from any member?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Culpepper to approve and a second from Commissioner Davenport. Commissioner Culpepper, any remarks?
Yes, I just wanted to talk a little bit about this initiative. This workforce development initiative started with a trip to Tuscaloosa back in the spring of 2022 to learn about the West Alabama Works program. Since its inception in 2015, West Alabama Works has experienced several various challenges and adjustments, but ultimately becoming a catalyst for the region's economic growth. Following the initial visit, there's been several additional trips and extensive collaboration with the West Alabama team, our local chamber, employers, and other community partners to create this workforce development strategy. By learning from the mistakes of the West Alabama Works plan, this will allow us to see results a lot quicker in our community. Employers are struggling to find qualified workers in Athens area and all over the country. It was mentioned earlier today about the low unemployment rate. Yes, there's a low unemployment rate, but there's also several people that are unemployed, that are underemployed, and this will allow them an avenue to get the skills to earn higher paying jobs. This initiative is laying the groundwork for collaboration among local employers, educational partners, workforce development stakeholders, and the local government. And the key is collaboration. That's one of the things that's been missing. There's a lot of good workforce development programs that are going on, but it's the collaboration that's missing between all the different stakeholders in the community. While many organizations are doing excellent job in the workforce development space, many employers and employees are unaware of the available programs. This plan will enhance the, enhance the awareness of and create opportunities for everyone involved by creating job seekers, by connecting job seekers with the available programs, workforce development programs, but also creating pathways for high school students and adults to earn, to gain the skills to earn higher paying jobs. There will be opportunities for all workforce development, all those involved in the workforce development space to get funding from the other money in the workforce development bucket, but this is to get this program kickstarted. We've got a lot of employers that are here and a lot of employers that are coming, and the key is, we've got to get, we've got to train the workforce. We have a, what they call a vanishing workforce right now. Birth rate is down, and the baby boomers have retired early, and so we've got to take advantage of the people that we have, and we've got to get them trained and prepare them for the future with high, for the highest paying jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davenport?
You know, Culpepper.
Got Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I'd like to make a substitute motion to put this on hold, at least until we receive the report from the other Workforce Development Task Force that I believe.
I'm second it. I'm going to second that.
Got a substitute motion to hold from Commissioner Link and a second from Commissioner Thornton.
I mean, I have a lot of questions about this, and I brought some of them up during the works session as well as in the agenda session. And going through this document, I just don't see any data to back up particularly these key, key strategic sectors. You know, over and over again, we hear about the needs within this government for CDL drivers, for our bus work, for our buses. You know, the school district also is in need of those. Also, our solid waste department needs those. You know, I don't see that as being listed as a key need. You know, we hear about the need for social service providers, and we have all these initiatives regarding mental health and homelessness, and that's not mentioned in here. Environmental sciences, building and construction, we have lots and lots of building and a lot, a lot of need for building going on, particularly housing. We have some really huge SPOS projects coming down the line. That's a key area that isn't mentioned here. I just, I really want to see what this other task force comes up with and see how these two initiatives can be melded to put together something that's, that's really complete and can meet the actual needs of this community. I want to see some data. I want to see some analysis of where the vacancies are and where the real needs are, and I don't see that at all in here. I mean, maybe it was done, but it's not included in the report.
Commissioner Thornton, Thornton, I'm going to turn to you as secondary of the substitute motion.
Yes, I have the same concerns that Commissioner Link has, and maybe even some more. We keep talking about Tuscaloosa. Tuscaloosa, I think, started in about 15 years ago. And what is amazing about Tuscaloosa that is not happening here, Mercedes-Benz put up the money. It wasn't the government, it wasn't taxpayers, it was business, because they believed in something. I would have liked to see the chamber match our ARPA dollars if they're that serious about it. The other thing is, I just, I just realized, okay, so I probably missed it, that we had two different workforce groups working on workforce development. I don't know, that to me is a red flag right there. If we're talking about collaboration, how do we create two different workforce groups out of the same pot of money? And I almost think it's a little bit of an insult to say those folk that, who have been left out, oh, they can go and get funding from the other group that's working. We should be working, you're not setting example, you are not setting an example of collaboration when you go do your thing and leave another group doing this. So let's don't say collaboration no more. School district, school district has, we're, we, our ARPA dollars are contributing $100,000. The school district has a fund balance of over $57 million plus. You know, I don't know why everybody thinks the government is supposed to pay everybody's tab. That's a red flag for me. Measurements. Your report is nicely written, but there is no clear data, measurements, or goals. So I guess you're going to make them as you go, but I do not think that's the best way to use, and ARPA dollars are still taxpayer dollars. They're not local dollars, but they're still taxpayer dollars. Transparency. I get this long list of everybody who have participated in this process. They're the same folk that participate in Envision Athens, same folk that participate with the chamber, same group of folk, it's the same group. When are you going to open up the table and invite some other folk in that have ideas? And not only ideas that are also, but they're already doing stuff. That 2.5, that's a great number, but some of the other organizations.
Commissioner Thornton, do you need additional time?
Yes, I do.
With the body vote to provide additional minute to Commissioner Thornton?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, additional minute.
Additional minute. Okay, well, hold on, don't start the clock yet. Transparency, collaboration. The other thing is, I really think that the chamber has a good door because of who their members are. Who you're, you got Georgia Power, you got all of these, you know, very influential groups here, but I don't see these groups in the community that I'm trying to serve and represent and speak for. So I don't think it's totally right. I would like for us to take, to table this and look for creating a workforce development hub that can do the work that the chamber would like to do, to address the immediate needs of jobs, and to work on job creation and entrepreneurship, a workforce hub. All of y'all are working together, but creating these diverse streams for the people's needs. This group is no better than this other group that's working, and I just, and I've talked to David, so we're good, we're good, right? We still good, right? I've talked to David, and there were some gaps. I feel as though we can fill if we had a little bit more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to turn to Commissioner Fisher and then Commissioner Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, how hypocritical are we? You know, we got $57 million four years ago, and a bunch of nonprofits have came to us and asked for money, and they never came with no data. And we sit here saying, you need to show us data. That's very hypocritical for us to sit behind this rail and talk about somebody that's presenting data. That just bothers me, so let's just cut the chase on that.
We didn't get to see the data.
I'm not done.
Okay, but we didn't get to see the data.
I'm just recognizing Commissioner Fisher on the floor.
I'm not done. I didn't cut you off, so don't cut me off. You know, but we sit around the table, you know, we talk about we want to do these things, not one person tonight has talked about the 21% property rate that we have in this community. We need to think about that. You know, we talk about trying to lift people out of poverty, and the only way, the two ways I see that is education and good paying jobs. So, and I've told my colleagues, whatever the way the vote goes, the vote goes, and I'm okay with that, you know, and we'll live and talk another day about it, whatever, but, you know, let's don't come up here and say, well, where's the data? And we give people money all the time, when they come ask for us, they don't bring no data. They just want the money. So, you know, we're not, we're not going to play those games. So, my colleagues, if we vote to hold, we vote to hold, and we can build a better plan if we hold, so be it. If we pass it, what I want to see, if this does pass, it do, it do need to be a very collaboration among our small business development, because they got left out, and I get that, and that's unfortunate. But there's always room to correct the mistakes that we made. If I make a mistake, I'm going to admit I was wrong. So if we dropped the ball on this, or the chamber dropped the ball, let's see what we can do to correct it, but that, don't, don't, don't try to sell us that there's no data there, because we give people millions of dollars and they ain't showed no data to us in the past, so, so we're not going to go down that road. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to turn to Commissioner Taylor.
Yes, so as co-chair of the Workforce Task Force that was created by Mayor Gertz earlier this year, at our first meeting, and I'm probably going to have to ask for more time, but at our first meeting, we were, we were told not to look at the dollar amount, to not let the dollar amount dictate the type of work that we did. And as a task force, we have went forth and, and came up with three subgroup committees. We've done great work, and we've come up with great strategies. Now, since this presentation of the chamber's ask, at our last meeting, everyone at the table asked, were they going to be able to have the same opportunities towards this ARPA funds? Because not only do they sit on the task force, but they also have organizations that do workforce development as well. Now, with, speaking with Mr. Bradley earlier this week, it was under my impression that we would work together to see that all of the organizations who weren't included, who, who are boots to the ground and that are doing work in the community, is added as a type of collaboration. Now, I guess I get the feeling that there were conversations outside of that that was, I wasn't privy to, but I would say, I would support us holding this so that the organizations who weren't named to be included, so that Athens-Clark County, and it is $4 million. We also have a task force who is also going to be making presentations before us, who will also have an ask attached to the work that they have done. I don't feel like a hypocrite asking for, no shade, you know I love you, but asking for data for the literacy program, because while I do champion workforce development, the implementation of a literacy program in a predominantly black elementary school, that kind of rubs me the wrong way completely. And as a mom, to know that that same literacy program is going to be implemented in my elementary school, my two children's elementary school next year, also had me just as livid, because none of the parents got a notification that this would be, this literacy program would be implemented. So I did a deep dive, a deep dive to see, you know, get comfortable model, and it was a lot of the same players. And y'all kids don't go to the school that the literacy program is going to be implemented. So as a mom, whose two children will be impacted by that literacy program, for one, we should have been notified, and for two.
Commissioner, I want to go ahead and check with your colleagues. Is everybody okay with an additional minute for Commissioner Taylor?
I, I, I still need those numbers so that I can confidently send my children off to school August 1st, knowing that they're going to be reading better. And, and also, I lost my train of thought, so that's, that's about it. I hope that we are able to use this as a, as a collaboration method and not a tool to be further divided, so, my two cents.
Any further remarks from the body? Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. A quick procedure question, are we getting three minutes or five minutes? Because the rules that we, maybe not I, but the body voted down changing means that we're still five minutes according to our rules, so I'm just checking. Are we five or three?
Three.
Three.
No, all right, all right.
Three, three, three-minute opportunities has been the practice.
I do think it's important for us to adhere to our own rules, and in this case, our rules say five, not three, but, and I just have a question for Attorney Drake. Do we need a budget, is there a budget ordinance for this since there's money being allocated?
I did not see one, may I missed it? Let me look at the agenda item again.
I didn't, yeah, so we don't need one? Okay, I'm seeing head shakes. Okay, good deal.
Y'all have already allocated it to that bucket, I think, is what they're saying.
Because it's in the bucket, it's, okay. The buckets, the beauty of the buckets, okay. I too would like to table and hold, my thinking has some overlap with remarks we've heard from other colleagues. My thinking has some overlap with remarks we've heard from other colleagues. I, I do think there's clear interest in this body to move forward with this proposal in some form. So I don't personally see a meaningful difference between now and a few months from now. We know we must act on this by the end of the year. And noting that it's taken years to get to this point, I don't see how much difference a few months makes in terms of how effective it can be as it's currently written, but I think that could make a difference in a few ways. And so, my, my three main reasons for why I think we need more time. First is to consider this in tandem with the other proposal that's still in development, but almost done, as colleagues have noted. The second is to get a bit more clarity on the plan for sustaining funding after this ARPA allocation runs out, because that does seem a bit vague to me right now. And the third is to make space for some potential tweaks to this plan. And without belaboring a lot of stuff that came up in the agenda setting or that folks raised at the microphone, I, I will note that two things that really stick out to me are the way that we're citing our targets for like who we want to focus on, for putting in this pipeline, so to speak, what kind of workforce development we want to see, on what our economic development has listed as like target businesses to recruit. But as I've said before, I don't think that the workers that we need to train are necessarily synonymous with the types of businesses we need to recruit. We have existing huge gaps in our community. And if you look at the agenda item, childcare is mentioned repeatedly throughout the agenda item and the history of this, and was emphasized at the top of the list when we made the bucket, but it's mentioned nowhere in this proposal. Similarly, we've talked a lot about CDLs, we've talked a lot about mental health care and behavioral health care. And while healthcare is listed here, I think it's often the case that without specifically noting mental health care, the healthcare interpretation tends to be more around things you traditionally see filling up a hospital. And we need that too. It's just that I think we need-
May we provide Commissioner Hul an additional minute?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. I was actually, that was, you know, I have like 10 seconds left, but, and like you, Commissioner Taylor, I'm losing my place now. But, yeah, anyway, you know, I, I just, I would really urge my colleagues to consider that a little bit more time probably doesn't make a huge difference on the effectiveness of this plan, and it might actually make this plan better. And, and I look forward to supporting it in, in a few months' time if we can support the hold. Thanks.
Commissioner Thornton?
I do want to make sure that Commissioner Fisher knows that I love him, and I don't have a problem with being a hypocrite, but I do want to say this. As long as I have been on this commission, Commissioner, until you have come on here, I have asked for reports, data, and, and collaboration. We just never pushed it through like we should have. So there are reports. I don't want people to think I'm saying there are no reports, but I imagine they're housed either on a dashboard or HCD. But we, the commission, has never received the reports. So it's nothing hypocritical about what I said. It's, it's just something that didn't- And here again, those are things that we need to fix before we unleash another $1.9 million. We need to have, we need to have our stuff in place also, how we are going to receive and what we're looking for. The last thing I am going to say is, we're missing the elephant in the room. We have an arena getting ready to go up. We should be, that would be a nice focus area, and it would be a quick return on our investment, training people, pairing them for those labor jobs that the chamber is going to need. So we just can't keep pushing money out there. We've got to find ways to recycle money back into our community. We don't just need to train people, and they go off into the sunset. We want them to be productive citizens. And not to mention, the government, we're doing workforce development here in the local government, with the sheriff's department, with the women and, women in construction. We just did the paint thing with the folks in the jail. So we're doing workforce development, but it's not in this plan. And we need a very comprehensive plan. I support the chamber. I'm glad they kicked it off because now it's going to make all of us get in, in stride.
I want to turn to Commissioner Myers.
Yeah. Just a couple of comments here building off of what some of my colleagues have said. One, actually, I'm going to follow up and meet from one of the earlier points that Commissioner Thornton made. I would feel better about this if there was money being put forth by industry and by the school system as well. Because I think in the long range, I know this is just seed money, and that there's not an expectation of there being further money, but the collaboration that this is supposed to, you know, supposed to represent could be backed up with funds from industry. That was one of the bigger differences with the Alabama Works program was the involvement of, of the industry in there. Two, following up on a point that Commissioner Link and I believe Hul made, there is a goal one that mentions these biotech-in-advance craft beverages and so forth, but to be honest, there's no connection in any of the funding to any of those projects. So there's, I, I think one of the things I asked for the last time was to see how these monetary asks lined up actually with the goals that were in here. And I think that's an issue. The, the third thing I would bring up was the new part, as I represent, remember it from the Alabama Works, is a concept of the job portal with the navigators there who stay with the individual and help that individual get a job in another area, looking at their background. That is a new part in here. When it comes to the education parts and the money that's going to the nonprofits, these are, these are organizations that are doing good work, but I still haven't wrapped my head around the idea of why these groups in particular got on this list, other than, and not other groups, and didn't have an opportunity to get on the list. So I feel awkward about that. And finally, on the, looking at the, the way we're spending money for the other workforce that I'm, group that I'm co-chairing with Commissioner, Commissioner Taylor, so many names up here, huh? Anyway, that, that having all of these ideas together, I think will, if we're, we're talking about the ARPA monies in July, we also have youth development money as well, and there's so much overlap, I'd like to kind of see the whole package together as we're moving forward on it. And so I am going to support the holding of the project, the agenda item.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll just note, I think everybody behind the dais here is well-intentioned and wants to see good work happen in the community from the ground level, kind of all the way through a continuum well into adulthood to the returning citizens that we've talked about. One of the things I've often recognized in this public policy work is that we want to do so very many things. But what I don't want is the desire to do all good things to hamper a set of good things that we can move forward with, that can be joined by some others subsequently. Very glad that we have really an additional $2 million left beyond the funds that are requested for this program. Certainly very glad that we have over $3 million of youth development funds forthcoming. But I would like to see us get started on this post haste. So appreciate everybody's diligence, but I would like us to move forward. So I'm going to go ahead and turn to Manager Williams and see-
Sorry, just a point of information in case this was a termine to your vote, but there are indeed performance indicators in the proposal. You'll find them on page 705 of your, of the agenda packet, and just want to share that.
Thank you for pointing that out, Manager Williams. All right, the substitute motion on the floor is to hold. We'll go ahead and do a roll call. Is there a date certain?
It was tied to when we got the other proposal-
I'd like to hold at least until we get the other report from the other task force.
Can I have a question, Mayor?
Yes. Clarifying question from Commissioner Fisher.
Do the, do the second task force know when y'all going to be done?
Yes, I think, believe we're wrapping that up with, in the next week or two, and having something come forth in July.
So could, could we just modify the motion to say, hold to no later than the voting meeting in August?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That's acceptable to the motioners. So hold to no later than the voting meeting in August. All right, Clerk is going to do a roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Wright?
Nope.
Fisher?
No.
Hul?
Yes.
Culpepper?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
No.
Five yes, five no.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to vote no. We return to the original motion.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Hul.
Six yes, four no.
Hul, Hul, no.
I'm sorry, Hul.
No.
No. Okay. Four yes, six no.
No.
Five-five, I believe.
I'm sorry, one, two, three. Five yes, five no.
We'll vote yes. All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, moving on to item number 35. 35 is acceptance of the Youth Development Violence Prevention Advisory Committee report. So no funds are allocated with this. This is acceptance of that report that we saw Dr. Scott present in this room.
Some moved.
Is there a motion regarding this?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton and second from Commissioner Culpepper. Commissioner Thornton, any follow-up remarks?
No.
Commissioner Culpepper?
No.
Anything else from members of the body? Commissioner Hul?
I do two things. One, I want to clarify, since this is not allocating any funding, what can we expect in terms of funding after this point if we accept this?
That's a great question. One of the things that we're going to line up is a work session with the body the afternoon of our next agenda setting meeting, July 16th at 4:00, so that we can talk about allocation of those remaining ARPA dollars, which obviously we have to do by the end of this year. And one of the things that we heard from the group when they presented is that they were going to follow up with some more specific detail. I don't know if Manager Williams or anybody else on staff has additional information about that.
No, sir, you, that, you answered what I know.
Nothing at this point.
Okay, so no funding goes out the door without a subsequent action?
Correct.
With that in mind, I'm inclined to support this. I think, you know, some good work has gone into it. But I do just want to share two concerns I have with this. One is, I do feel that there are some specifics lacking at this point that hopefully can get hammered out between now and that work session by whoever's going to present at it. And specifically, something akin to a street-level outreach program is something that I still think should be highlighted, especially if this goes the route of us putting out RFPs for people to build programs. And the, the other thing I want to note is the lack of clarity on financials makes me, I think to use Commissioner Myers, words from earlier, feel awkward about approving this. I am worried that approving this will send, probably going to approve it unanimously, it seems like, will send the message that, you know, this is enough, and we can just kind of throw some money somewhere after this. And, and I'm hesitant to give that impression. So I do want to be clear that, similar to points raised in the previous discussion around partnerships requiring funding to back up the term partner, I, I do hope that whatever we're putting money toward, if it, if it involves partnering with other organizations or institutions that have large amounts of funding, especially, say, the school district who levies their own taxes and has also got an ARPA money, I would hope that any such partnership would also involve money on the table from all parties involved. But with those things noted, I'm, I'm happy to support accepting the report and I thank those who, who spent time working on it.
Commissioner Myers?
Likewise, I would like to accept the report, take the recommendations into consideration, but want to make sure that we have a more focused, more focused eventuality in some of our funding allocation on immediate, short-term, street-level interventions with gun and gang violence, using the models that are some things that are being used in Atlanta's Office of Violence Reduction, and some of the information some of us have heard on violence interruptors and recovery programs to wrap around the, with the young men or women and families who are involved in gun and gang violence. There's $3.9 million of the $7 million that's still unallocated to the, for the youth development and violence prevention bucket. So we have an opportunity to bring that up, and this like lines right up with the resolution that we're working on, we'll be voting on later on in this agenda. I, I do want to point out as well that there's, there's only three recommendations in this, and the third recommendation is post-graduation skills development, which overlaps, you know, pretty much with some of what we were talking about in the last agenda item as well. So again, I have a desire to see all of these initiatives and funding strategies set out together so we can see where they are focusing distinctly in the community and how they overlap and are separate.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further remarks? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries, and the report is accepted. All right, item number 36 is the Sanford Stadium Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Upgrade Project, project concept approval. Do I hear a motion regarding this?
Motion to approve one, ABC.
I've got a motion for one, ABC, from Commissioner Wright, and a second from Commissioner Hamby. Commissioner Wright, any, any stadium-related remarks regarding sewer?
I do, but it's a little late for that. I'll just ready to vote.
Commissioner Hamby, any sewage-related remarks?
I think Manager Williams had a remark about sewer.
I didn't mean to preempt you, sir.
No, that's, go ahead. You talk sewer all day.
I know it's been a long night, but I, I do want to commend the university for working with us on this and the Athletics Association. The staff has been remarkable. This is something that benefits the residents of Athens Clark County and that whole sub-basin. And it is a piece of infrastructure that the university owns, that our pipe runs through. And not only they giving us permission to remain there, but they're also helping to coordinate this whole thing. And that's what this agenda item is for. So I just want to point out that successful partnership and thank the University of Georgia staff for working so closely and well with our staff.
Thank you, Manager Williams.
That's good. Thank you. Appreciate you saying that.
Anything else from members of the commission? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 37, the Georgia Square Mall Community Benefits Agreement. The attorney's office is still putting a couple of just final details on, and so they've asked that we hold this. Can I hear a motion to hold?
Motion to hold until June 14th.
Second.
I've got a motion to hold from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Fisher.
The motioner, do you say hold till the 14th?
Yeah, my understanding is to bring this to the June 14th special call session that we're also going to have for some other stuff we talked about today.
Attorney's office has confirmed that that's when they anticipate we'll have all the details.
Good stuff. I really hope we do because I don't want to have to meet again until July.
Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 38, staff has also recommended to hold. We should see this in the July-August cycle. Do I hear a motion to hold?
Some move.
Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby. Who is the second or?
I'll second.
All right, second from Commissioner Link. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 39?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the ordinance to update the water and wastewater connection fees. I got a motion from Commissioner Hamby. Who is the second?
Patrick.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, a second from Commissioner Davenport. Commissioner Hamby, any remarks?
No, sir.
Commissioner Davenport? Anything from other members of the commission? Let me go ahead and have Attorney Drake read this ordinance.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to exemptions for water and sewer fees and for other purposes.
Thanks, Attorney Drake. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, item 40 is the North Aconey Access Road Bridge Emergency Repair Contract Award. Of course, work has already begun on this, and we need to affirm this work. Is there a motion?
Some move.
All right, got a motion from Hamby, a second from Davenport. Anything on this, Commissioner Hamby?
No, sir.
Anything, Commissioner Davenport?
Go forth and do good.
All right, anything from any other member of the commission? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item forty-one is the Pension Plan Design Update. There's a request to hold this. Do I hear a motion to hold?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second with the question of when are we holding till?
Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby to hold, second from Commissioner Hul. Commissioner Hamby, anything before Commissioner Hul's question?
Yeah, I might be able to address that. I know the pension board's been real, uh, active in looking at some modifications to the ordinances, and since we're holding this, it's probably best for them, excuse me, to, uh, take a look at it and discuss it a little bit further and bring it back to the mayor's commission, and there may be some other, other modifications as well, but is that correct, Manager Williams?
Yes, uh, this was, just came back from an, not, an attorney not affiliated with Attorney's Office, some, some additional questions and clarification, so hopefully they're just administrative in nature, and, uh, hopefully we can clarify that with the pension board and come back as soon as possible.
Okay, or if there's a faster route, then we'll let you know as well.
So is this next agenda cycle or is this the July, June fourteenth potentially?
I think, I think it'd be the next agenda cycle, probably, if that.
Chair Hamby is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? All right, motion to hold, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. We'll see that next month. All right, item forty-two is to amend the North Downtown Athens Development Phase One Loan Agreement with the Athens Downtown Development Authority, who's been a great supporter of the project and the Athens Housing Authority and all of our partners. Do I hear a motion regarding this?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Thornton. Let me give the second to Commissioner Link. Commissioner Thornton, any further remarks regarding this?
No.
Commissioner Link?
No, I'm happy to see this moving forward.
Any from others? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Mayor's ordinance?
Oh, an ordinance from Attorney Drake.
Yep, ordinance to amend the FY twenty-four annual operating, annual operating capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide affordable housing grant funding for the North Athens Downtown Development Project and for other purposes.
And the motion, the so moved is to approve, right?
Motion is to approve. Uh, we'll just affirm that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, uh, item forty-three, the most significant thing we do every year, approval of the FY twenty-five operating in capital budget, establishment of the twenty-twenty-four property tax rate, and approval of the schedule of fees and charges for FY twenty-five and for other purposes. Uh, I just want to say at the outset, I really appreciate commissioners working collaboratively to get this to where the place it is in now. That's, uh, much, much, much appreciated, um, and following our charter ordered charge. So I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, turn to Commissioner Hul for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a, a wordy motion that's been vetted by and is at the urging of our Attorney's Office, so, uh, folks will note that in addition to the commission-defined option pro forma that's in here, um, which builds off of the mayor's recommended budget, there's also, um, a document, an updated agreement with the Athens Downtown Development Authority, um, and that accomplishes a few things at once, and so this wordy, uh, motion is to make sure we get all that wrapped into one here. So the motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the FY twenty-five budget and related documents as presented in the agenda packet with modifications to the mayor's recommended budget as outlined in the commission-defined option, or CDO, specifically the final version as of five-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, with the June fourth administrative correction offered by myself and Commissioners Hamby and Fisher. Uh, the mayor and manager are hereby authorized to execute the attached amended contract between ACC Gov. and the Athens Downtown Development Authority, or ADDA, which incorporates the changes in revenue distribution outlined in the CDO, as well as changes to parking ordinance enforcement provisions as requested by staff, specifically granting ADDA the authority to tow as necessary, as well as the authority to subcontract for enforcement with prior ACC Gov. consent.
All right, there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Hul and second from Commissioner Fisher. Uh, Commissioner Hul, did you have any follow-up remarks?
Um, you know, we've talked about this a lot to date, um, so I guess in the interest of how long we've been here, I don't have a whole lot I want to add, but in the interest of being transparent with the public, I'll just, uh, say aloud a few things that changed since our last meeting, uh, mostly to address some administrative things. So one is, um, that the sheriff's office, uh, we've, we've moved from that immediate funding to funding a salary and that figure that people see five-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand. It's important to look at the notes column, which also references a note at the end of this, that, that's a, a ballpark of what the study should cost, which should be way less than that, and then leaving money left over to fund raises that we anticipate to look something like what we were originally gonna do at the outset, um, mid-year. So, so that, that is money to fund, uh, higher salaries that we anticipate seeing recommended by that study. There's also, um, a couple of additions, uh, since we last spoke. There's a small line item to, um, complete the request of the Board of Elec, Board of Elections for Spanish-language translation, to do the ballots as well as other, um, items, and to add the, uh, request for the vehicle that we got from the Solicitor General. So I think those are the, the main things, and then, you know, some number tweaking that, uh, nerds like me can have fun, uh, comparing to past versions. But, um, yeah, with, with, with that in mind, I'll avoid belaboring it any further unless folks on this body have questions.
Commissioner Fisher, any remarks? Commissioner Culpepper?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to make it known that I'll be voting no on this budget. When the mayor sent us his recommended budget, I was hoping to work with colleagues to find areas to cut the budget to allow for another millage rate reduction. While the CDO does not, uh, call for an increase in the millage rate, it does add another ten million dollars to the mayor's proposed budget. Um, since twenty-twenty-two, the budget has increased by eighty-eight million dollars, and the general fund operating expenses has ridden, risen by forty-one million dollars in the same timeframe. In addition, we've added sixty-six positions to this government. I just think we need to work on trying to reduce and rein in our spending, so I'll be voting no.
Other remarks from members of the body? Anyone who haven't heard from? Commissioner Myers?
I just wanted some clarification again on that the, that Commissioner Hul just made in terms of the salary study. So for the five-hundred-and-forty-five, uh, five-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars on that line, um, one, one could say that probably about, I don't know, four-hundred-thousand of that or four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of that is, will actually be for salary increases that might come in the middle of the year. Is that the anticipation? Is what's anticipated?
Um, that was the rationale for the number we came up with. Of course, we can't foretell what the study that's done will say, um, but we did specify that we want them to look at other unified governments in the metro Atlanta area, which were left out of previous studies, and that's likely to yield figures similar to what we've heard the sheriff ask for. And then, uh, you know, we, we did have an estimate from staff on how much it would be to just implement it tomorrow, um, which would have gone against a lot of colleagues' desires and recommendations from staff and the attorney, so, um, so we kinda just said like, okay, what's, what's half of that amount, thinking it'll probably take roughly half a year to write the RFP, send it out, get the info back, um, so like a mid-year funding of half that amount with, um, hopefully low amount spent on, on that study being done. And then I, I guess while I'm here, I'll just say, I, I, the family counseling, uh, the family connection communities and schools request for the Neighborhood Leaders Program, um, you know, noting the timeline, um, that their request came in on, you know, after having that March work session where everybody spoke positively about the program, um, I would just ask that, uh, staff, assuming colleagues agree, or the mayor agrees, uh, bring forth some kind of agenda item for us to consider in the next cycle to, to look at that request and perhaps make a, a budget amendment at that time if we see fit.
Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I really am not, um, happy with this budget at all, but I do appreciate the, um, the work that my colleagues put into this. I do think that, um, a millage rate decrease, uh, is warranted. I think that we ask a lot from our citizens to, um, to pay for. I was very, very concerned about all the needs that our judiciary, um, system needed. I think that, um, by now, we should be a little better automated to get things done quicker. I think, uh, we don't even think down the road how software wears out and, and, um, I just think that we should be a lot better automated than we are. And I think that it is our fault that we have been putting monies where it needs to be. Now, um, as far as the Neighborhood Leaders, which I one-hundred-plus, um, support, the Neighborhood Leaders is, is, is the reason why I did not want to support one of the, it's a good example. The Neighborhood Leaders came out of, um, a special fund we did a few years ago. In some kind of way, it slipped into the general budget. I don't remember voting on it, I don't remember us discussing it. Um, we also were supposed to get grant writers that were supposed to sustain or help sustain the, uh, Neighborhood Leaders. And the, you know, I, you know, I don't know what happens when we vote on things, um, but things change. And I do believe if, if we are not watching this little bit of ARPA money that we have left, we're gonna see the same kind of, um, shell game that we saw with the Nei, and I support the Neighborhood Leaders, let me be clear. They do great work. I am gonna vote for this, but I'm gonna vote for this, uh, budget, um, because we just, we, we need a budget, and I'm tired. And I am proud that, um, commissioners work together so we don't have the nonsense we had last year. But this was not our best deal. I, I, I agree with, with John, we just spending money like it's our own personal money. But hopefully next year, we'll be prepared to make some cuts where there need to be cuts at.
Any further input? Commissioner Hul?
I'll just end on a positive note because we don't have the same nonsense as last year. Um, I really appreciate everybody engaging in this, you know, uh, and I, I especially...
That's a vote right there.
I especially appreciate Commissioners Hamby and Fisher for working a bunch between our last meeting and, and today to get here, and, and that also included a whole lot of work from staff, including and especially in the Finance Department, the Attorney's Office and the Manager's Office to get this over the finish line, so, um, with that rainbows and unicorns conclusion, I look forward to approval, hopefully.
There's at least one mayor behind the dais who expected at least an additional budget work session, if not a couple of them, so I appreciate the hard work that went into the planning behind this. Uh, so we're gonna go ahead and, uh, turn to Attorney Drake, who needs to read the ordinance.
Yep, there's actually a ordinance to, for the budget and also an ordinance, uh, connected to the budget related to the creation of new departments that the managers, you, you put in the budget process. So the first one is an ordinance to provide for the raising of revenues and the appropriation of funds for Athens-Clark County, Georgia for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, beginning July first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, to provide for the operations of government departments, boards, agencies, elected offices, and other governmental activities, to provide for the level of personnel authorized for the various departments and agencies, to provide for a capital budget to establish two thousand twenty-four property taxes, to establish compensation for the charter officers, to establish rates and structure of fiscal year two thousand twenty-five health insurance programs, to establish fees and charges, to refill, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to provide effective dates and for other purposes. The next ordinance is... An ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to establishing new departments of the Unified Government of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, and for other purposes. Those are the two ordinances, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Attorney Drake, I appreciate that, and we'll go ahead and do a roll call beginning with Commissioner Hul.
Yes. Culpepper?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor? Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Nine yes, one no.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The budget passes. All right, we have, uh, items of new business that we need to consider under suspension of rules. I'll entertain a motion for suspension of rule at this point.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Taylor, second from Commissioner Wright for suspension of rules. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, uh, item forty-four is a resolution in support of Athens' use and against gang and gun violence. I appreciate very much commissioners working on this. Commissioner Taylor, would you like to make a motion, make some remarks? All right, motion from Commissioner Taylor. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Taylor and a second from Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Taylor, any further remarks?
Um, this resolution came about, um, with me and Commissioner Myers, um, and we sat down with Commissioner Fisher as well as Commissioner Thornton, um, to get teeth, um, behind this resolution. I also reached out to various community members as well as, um, Baby Dro's mom, um, to get her approval and her blessing, um, for this resolution. What we see so often is young black men losing their lives to gang violence and gun, gun violence, um, in cooperation with being in gangs. And while this is a journey, not, um, a destination, I think that it's important that we learn, um, from incidents like this so that we do have a better and safer community for, um, low-income minority families, such as me, even though I sit on the commission. And so I, I also wanted to recognize, um, not only Ms. Smith, but all of the moms who have lost their sons and/or daughters to gang and gun violence, um, not only in this past year, but in the history of Athens-Clark County. My family is, is as well a two-time victim of, um, losing men young to gun violence. Um, and so as, as commissioner, I want to use my platform to shine light on the things that's going on in our community, because, uh, what we so easily find is that we have so many voices that will speak to things that they really don't have skin in the game, but it sounds good to speak on it. And so with this resolution, I, um, just want to shout out my community and let you know that Athens-Clark County government, we do care, we do see you, um, and I'm here with you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Myers.
Yeah, yes, I'm, I'm glad to be, uh, supporting this and moving this forward, um, and I hope that when we come back and talk about ARPA funds, that we'll follow through with the commitment in here to putting some money behind this. Really, you know, I, during my reelection campaign, I went through so many neighborhoods where people have these solid, solid, middle-class lives and have a lot of, have opportunity, have grass to walk on and so forth, and then I go through a couple of other neighborhoods where people are just struggling so much and where the, the peop, residents talk to me about the violence that the youth are experiencing, that they're experiencing, um, and I think we need to do all we can to embrace those parts of our community, those youth and those families that have suffered because of the violence. So I am glad that we are, um, moving forward with this.
Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I, I just want to point out that gun violence begins with guns, and, um, I, I hope that we can pass this resolution on to our state legislators, our Republican state legislators who repeatedly pass laws that make gun access easier and easier. We need some action from the state level to see that these weapons do not fall into the hands of young people and, and criminals and, and people who would intend to use them against one another. Um, so I, I understand that, that Savannah might be going through some litigation, um, they've been challenged by the, the, um, state Attorney's Office, um, over ordinance they passed that would, um, prohibit people from storing guns in unlocked vehicles, and, and I would hope that we could issue some kind of amicus brief in, in urging that, that law be allowed to pass, because we have many instances of weapons being stolen from unlocked vehicles in this community, um, and falling into the wrong hands, and, and, you know, Georgia is one of the number-one sources of illegally transferred weapons throughout the nation. People, people get their guns in Georgia and they're used in other states to commit criminal acts, so I, I think we need to go beyond this resolution and get to the source of the matter, which is the mass availability of weapons.
Commissioner Thornton?
Yes, I'd like to thank, um, Commissioner Myers and Commissioner, um, Taylor for allowing me to be in the conversation, um, about this resolution. I was very hesitant at first, 'cause I don't like doing resolutions that don't have no teeth in it. I don't like doing re, resolutions just to put something in the frame, but I do think...
But I do think this resolution, resolution opens the door for greater potential to address the issue. I do think this is the first time this commission has even recognized publicly the violence in this community. I hope that we can do more as we move forward. And I think we all should be the solution. And I think we could do that. But there are some folk I really know that don't care because it's not their kids. But I think this commission cares. So thank you both.
Thank you all. I appreciate very much the work that went into this and often contemplate the work that we do together and how, when we work best, we really coalesce around things that we recognize as common concerns of the community and things that we are able to all work on. And the need to create positive opportunities for young people and to prevent those negative happenings is certainly one of the things that I'm proud of all of you for rallying around time and again. And I know that that's going to continue. You might remember, Commissioners, we received a list some weeks ago from the police department of people who have been killed by gang and gun violence over the last decade. And unfortunately, the reality of the names on that list is that two of them were young men who I knew as, as young, what I thought of as young boys with bright eyes and bright futures, futures that have been eliminated. But the work we do together creates a better path for so many more young people in this community. So thank you for this. I've got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. All right, next item of new business is a resolution of the Commission of Athens Clark County to approve an official response to the Attorney General's Office and for other purposes. It is the case, when we get questions from the Attorney General's Office, that we have to have our attorney's office create a formal response. And that formal response comes by means of a resolution from this body. And they've done a, I think, a yeoman's job, yeowoman's job assembling this, this memo. And so I need a motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
Right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link and a second from Commissioner Wright. Any further remarks? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all. The last item of new business tonight is a resolution of the Commission of Athens Clark County, Georgia, to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a resignation agreement and general release related to Blaine Williams' resignation from appointment as manager of the Unified Government of Athens Clark County, Georgia, and for other purposes. Do I have a motion from the body?
Second.
Who is the motion? I apologize.
Me.
Motion from Commissioner Thornton, second from Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Thornton, any remarks?
No, I have no remarks.
Commissioner Fisher? Any from other members? Commissioner Hul.
Yeah, I think this is maybe our last chance to say anything to Manager Williams while he's in the room as manager. So I'm, I'm really disappointed that this is where we've landed as a community and as a government and as a, as a body. I completely understand Manager Williams' reasons for being where we are. But I feel like I would be remiss to not just take a moment to say what I believe or, you know, I would say I know to be true, which is that, Manager Williams, you've done a heck of a job, like an amazing job. I came into this role deeply suspicious of you and staff generally and really had my mind changed from a consistently fantastic job. And I think there's a lot of things that this government does, and especially that this body does, that puts staff and most especially the manager's office in a really difficult position. And I've seen you navigate that over and over again with grace and humility and integrity. And I think it's a shame that narratives persist in the community that, that might indicate otherwise. But I get asked repeatedly, you know, what's the biggest thing you learned as a commissioner? What's the thing that surprised you most? And my easy, quick, most obvious answer over and over again is how much I appreciate staff and how good of a job staff does. And ultimately, there's, you know, five people we appoint who are in charge of everyone that works on that staff. And the super majority of them work under the purview of the manager. So their work is their own. I don't want to pretend like all their work is attributable to you. But I've also heard from so many of them how much they've appreciated your leadership and, and I have as well. So this includes a non-disparagement clause, but I want to say before we vote that I wouldn't need that in there to say the same things I'm saying today. I truly believe it. And I wish you the best wherever you go from here. I hope it's somewhere still in Athens, but wherever you go, I wish you the best.
Commissioner Link.
Yeah, I would like to vote no on this item, but I will honor the manager's wishes and see it pass. I want to thank you, Blaine, for all your hard work assuring this government through unprecedentedly hard times. You know, I don't think any of us could have imagined what we would have lived through even five years ago. And you have managed it with the utmost competence and grace and honesty. I mean, we have not always seen eye to eye. And then like Jesse, I came into this role as someone who was suspicious of, of government and, and institutions in general. And I've come to realize, you know, the machine that makes things work and holds this community together, and it has everything to do with the people who work day in and day out and the people who oversee them competently and tediously, every little detail I couldn't imagine. We're unfortunate to live in interesting times in which agents of chaos and conspiracy theorists fall in line behind criminal fabulists and, and take aim at our institutions, seek to hollow them out and destroy our democracy and make way for, you know, what is intended to be fascism. And unfortunately, those agents have gotten hold of forces within this community, even within this government. And, and I'm sorry to see that you've become the target of that and some of the rest of us have become the target of that. I hope we can overcome it and I hope that some of these people come to their senses. I hope this community comes to its senses and overcomes some of this. And I think it's up to us as leaders to fight back against it. And, and Blaine, you will be severely missed.
Commissioner Myers.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to support this, but very reluctantly because I regret greatly what has led to this resignation. Before, from before I was commissioner, through this first term as commissioner, I have appreciated and highly valued you, Manager Williams. Your leadership, your integrity, and your contributions to the government and the community. This is a loss for the government and, and for the community. I only wish you the best. And I just feel so sad that, that we're here at this tonight.
Commissioner Davenport.
Thank you. I did owe some of my colleagues. It has been, I did owe some of my colleagues. It's been a rough week, but I do appreciate all that you have done, your professionalism. We have not seen eye to eye, but I appreciate your candor, your professionalism. And I know God is going to bless you because you deserve it. You're a great man. Don't let anybody tell you otherwise. Also, it's time for us as a community to heal and to move on and for us as commissioners as well to heal and to move on. And look, because our main purpose and our job is to protect the city of Athens and make sure that Athens is in a safe place when we move on or go on to other fabulous things. But thank you, Manager Williams. I know I've not had lunch with you because, you know, I work during the day. I will make some time to have lunch with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. I'll just say that when you, when you work for the concerns of the public trust, you hope to walk with people who will pick you up when you stumble and offer you sage advice and challenge you at times and ultimately kind of help seek fulfillment for the needs of this community that we love so dearly. And Blaine Williams has embodied all of that in my time as mayor and my preceding time as commissioner. And I know that that's going to be true for a future set of leaders. And I'm reluctant to pass his hand on to them, but I know that they will receive the same support that I have and that this community has here. So I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none. Motion carries. All right, next item is a report from the mayor. I have nothing further to offer tonight. I appreciate everybody's hard work, appreciate members of the public who come to us so diligently month in, month out. Going to go ahead and turn it over to the manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate, appreciate the comments. And I want you to know I'm filled with gratitude tonight. And I'd like to say a few words, if it's okay. You know, after eight years of dedicated service as the manager, I've made the heartfelt decision to resign from my position. My decision to resign is driven by a sincere desire to explore new opportunities for personal and professional growth and to be with my family. And I do so with a genuine sense of gratitude. Without the challenges and opportunities this position embodied, I would never have grown as much as a human being. And I suspect that would be the same for you as commissioners. It's a tough job. I'm deeply grateful to Mayor Gertz and each one of you of the current commission, as well as past elected leaders, for allowing me to serve in this capacity. I'm proud of the progress we've made together with an incredibly dedicated staff, several iterations of supportive commissions, as well as highly collaborative community stakeholders. I believe, and I firmly believe, the positive direction of our city is a testament to the hard work and dedication of everyone involved. Appreciate the kind words, but it takes everybody pulling the same direction to move this city forward. Some of the accomplishments, and I won't go on for too long, but we've done a lot together. Achieving the Unified Government's first ever AAA bond rating, that's not something a lot of governments across the nation have, and that's a testament to the financial strength of the government and our staff. Obtaining an ISO fire rating of one, that is not something a lot of governments have across the nation. With your leave, we acquired the rock quarry to ultimately provide the community with water independence and resilience for the next 100 years, among others. Expanding the Greenway and Firefly Trail Systems for miles and completing the signature Trail Creek Bridge restoration. And as we alluded to before, together, unprecedented times navigating the pandemic and historic staff attrition to provide uninterrupted and high-quality service delivery our residents expect, among others. And this all reflects the collective effort of a team that genuinely cares about the well-being of its residents. And I don't think you get thanked enough about that. I'm not sure our staff does either. So as I step down, I do so with an immense sense of accomplishment in what we've achieved together. I'm deeply grateful for this commission, you, your support of me, and the unanimous renewal of my contract last year. I have never taken for granted the confidence that you have instilled in me in allowing me to serve this community in this important position. And most notably, being able to recognize the potential of others, make connections, and then work alongside amazing public servants. Of all things, I'm most proud of the remarkable people who answered my invitation to serve this government. And I hope I have been a meaningful part of their careers and development. I eagerly await the continued growth and success of our city. I encourage the vigilant engagement of Athenians in this very special form of government. We should always seek to remember the Athenian oath. Working together to continually improve our beautiful city. I believe that this can be done by continuing to leverage a strong sense of social responsibility with a consistent use of reason and cooperative respect, while further recognizing the committed staff who constantly strive to make all of our lives better every day. I thank you for the opportunity to serve you. And with your approval of the agreement, I look forward to assisting in this important transition for the next 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Williams. Before we turn to members of the public for items not on the agenda, anything, Mr. Attorney? Anything, Mr. Auditor?
No comment.
Thank you. Now is that time when we'll receive public input on any items not on tonight's agenda. Same rules of input apply. It's a three-minute opportunity. Please make sure to state your name, tell us your place of residence, and speak clearly your interest.
Hi, my name is Jamie. I'm a resident of Athens Clark County.
I'm sorry, I just need to hear your name clearly.
Jamie, okay. And I'm now reading the ceasefire resolution we've proposed to the commission and mayor in January, that this commission has all been sent and only four have supported so far. So a resolution to support an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Palestine, whereas Palestine has been occupied by Israel since 1948. And as of January 16th, 2024, Israel has been bombing Gaza for 102 days, whereas the Gaza Strip is home to more than 2 million people who have endured decades of militarized violence and extreme resource scarcity. Since October 7th, this violence has intensified, leading to more than 20,000 additional deaths. It's outdated now. With thousands more deaths to come due to the lack of medical treatments, food, and water, and the Israeli military has prevented humanitarian aid from reaching civilians in Gaza despite catastrophic humanitarian conditions, whereas the United States has provided almost $4 billion in military aid to the state of Israel over the past year. Whereas Athenians contribute approximately $1.8 million in federal taxes to Israel without stipulation in the midst of a local homelessness crisis. Whereas millions of people around the world, thousands in the state of Georgia, and hundreds of individuals in Athens have participated in rallies and actions calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Whereas Palestinians in Athens have expressed fear for their safety after recent hate crimes against Palestinians in the U.S., incidents at local Athens gatherings, including a heckler calling mourners at a vigil terrorists and being arrested for harassing attendees. Whereas the U.N. General Assembly adopted a resolution calling for an immediate and sustained ceasefire on December 13th, 2023, whereas the United States has rejected all U.N. ceasefire agreements due to date. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and commission of the Unified Government of Athens Clark County, Georgia, that the Unified Government stands in solidarity with civilians suffering from the war violence around the world and particularly in the occupied territories of Palestine, that the city of Athens proclaims a conscientious objection to the use of Athens federal taxpayer funds in aiding Israel's genocidal military operations, that the Unified Government supports an immediate ceasefire in the occupied territories of Palestine in which civilians are being disproportionately unnecessarily harmed, that the Unified Government condemns all forms of racism, xenophobia, profiling, anti-Arab sentiment, anti-Jewish sentiment, Islamophobia, and antisemitism that arise in response to the conflict in Palestine, that the Unified Government intends to protect and advocate for Palestinian, Arab, Muslim, Jewish, and Christian members of our community, that the city of Athens calls upon the Biden administration, Senator John Ossoff, and Senator Raphael Warnock to support a ceasefire resolution, and we call upon Representative Mike Collins in support of Resolution 786 to amend an immediate ceasefire, and that the mayor and commission hereby direct the manager to support this resolution. Further resolved by the mayor and commission that a copy of this resolution be sent to Presidents Joe Biden, Vice President Kamala Harris, Senator John Ossoff, Senator Raphael Warnock, and Representative Mike Collins. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Peyton and I'm a concerned Athens community member who has been watching with horror the genocide and ethnic cleansing in Palestine in real time for over 242 days. I know many of you on the stage and many in the crowd have also been watching Israel, the U.S., and the West carry out a genocidal campaign against the Palestinian people also. Zip-tied Palestinians ran over with Israeli tanks. Palestinian babies beheaded under 2,000-pound American bombs. Limbs being amputated without anesthesia. Israeli snipers killing the loved ones of the deceased as they make the dangerous attempt to recover their loved ones' bodies. Medical centers failing to function to treat patients in Gaza. Investigative journalists who are fighting to share these stories and provide evidence of their suffering are being targeted for reporting on the genocide along with their families. The Biden administration, the most prominent expression of the Democratic Party and the United States government, has twisted itself into knots, bypassed Congress, ignored the Leahy Law, and dismissed objections to sending weapons and aid, aid to Israel unconditionally. This is a misuse of our tax dollars despite Israel's many documented war crimes, crimes against humanity, and crimes of genocide. The Biden administration maintains its ironclad The Biden administration maintains its ironclad alliance with the state of Israel, but Athens can take the proper stance, operate in the spirit of freedom and justice, and reject its complicity, especially as a major hub of young voters responsible for the electoral victories of many Democratic elected officials. Several months of street protest sit-ins, phone and email campaigns, petitions, and polls indicate major popular support for an immediate and permanent ceasefire that has gone largely ignored at all levels of the U.S. government. According to the Data for Progress poll from October, 67% of U.S. voters support a ceasefire. The bombs that are being dropped on the neighborhoods, schools, hospitals, and refugee camps are being made here in the U.S. The U.S. has repeatedly used its veto power to halt attempts for a ceasefire in the U.N. Security Council. The U.S. government's enabling of this genocide is what allows Israel to continue its mass death and land theft campaign. It is clear that many traditional forms of protest, many employed during the civil rights movement and against imperialist wars, are shifting the needle too slowly. In order just to halt that death machine that Israel and American forces are unleashing in Gaza and the West Bank, we have to take these issues directly to all centers of power. It is not too complicated or outside of our scope to demand that these actions end. With the support of a large majority of Americans in several international courts, human rights organizations, and labor unions, we call for a ceasefire resolution now. We are demanding that Athens Clark County Unified Government pass a resolution for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Palestine. As you just heard, this resolution has already been drafted with the help of coalition from community members, commissioners, and students. Mayor Gertz and commissioners, it's beyond time to pass a ceasefire resolution. Signing the open letter is not enough. We need a firm and unified statement that cuts through the noise, asserts Athens and its opposition to genocide, and pressures the federal government more effectively than if we were to leave ceasefire support up to individual politicians. It should be known that Mayor Kelly Gertz is obstructing a ceasefire resolution.
Thank you, Caitlin. Appreciate you coming tonight.
... on the agenda. I'll leave you with a Bible quote. "No man can serve two masters." Matthew 6:24. Thank you.
Good evening.
I'm Casey, District 10. As an Athens resident, I am aware that many of you do not endorse a passage of a ceasefire resolution. I understand that this issue may seem unrelated to Athens, but I believe that this is untrue. We are seeing our federal tax dollars funding violence against innocent civilians, and we have Palestinian community members in Athens who are witnessing violence against their people every day while their local government stays silent. Beyond that, the rhetoric I have seen around the Palestinian people and the dehumanization of a whole group of people is the same narrative I have seen rise around the immigrant community in Athens and the state of Georgia at large. The silence of those in power inevitably greenlights the continued oppression of both the Palestinian people at home and abroad, as well as our local immigrant communities. Additionally, I want to shed light on parallel issues. As you may be aware, there are many anti-immigrant bills that have passed in the last legislative session and have been signed into law by Governor Kemp. For example, HB 1105 mandates that local law enforcement must comply with failed policies and programs like 287G and error-prone ICE detainers that will cost counties millions of dollars. This bill could lead to racial profiling and divest funds for much-needed community programs. I urge you and other members of local government to use your voices to consider how this bill will impact our communities in Athens and across the state. This is undoubtedly an Athens issue. Like Palestinians, immigrants in our community do not feel safe, seen, or heard. To provide more context on my support for the Palestinian people, the U.S. national government has refused to support U.N. ceasefire agreements in Palestine and is even still providing aid to Israel in conducting their genocide. Their actions do not reflect the will of the American people. 55% of Americans disagree with Israel's actions in Gaza. 67% of American voters support a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. However, in the face of our national representatives' continued backing of Israel's genocide against Palestinians, over 100 cities from coast to coast have successfully passed local resolutions calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. These resolutions do not involve any binding legislation or action for the council to take. They are instead a local action on behalf of the city with the purpose of adding our community's voices to a building national consensus, expressing support for an end to violence and for solidarity with the Palestinian people in the United States and abroad. This is the least we can do in witnessing such great acts of violence against Palestinians. I encourage you and other commissioners who oppose the passage of this resolution to become further informed on this issue and listen to the voices of your constituents. Additionally, I encourage you to speak up about the issues facing our local and state communities. Your constituents are watching, and I hope that you have received my message and are open to learning more about how these issues are all relevant to the well-being of our Athens community.
Thank you, Casey. Good evening.
Good evening. Eli Lewis again, District 10. And I'm returning to once again talk about the ceasefire resolution, which you just heard, specifically the conscientious objection to the misuse of federal funds. The last time we were here, we heard that a program in Athens would have to be put on hold because the federal government had given approximately $100,000 less than what was needed. The commission is currently struggling to meet the needs of its citizens because our federal government is continuously providing less funds than we need to be good stewards of our town. When people tell you that the misuse of the federal funds through this genocide are not a local issue, they're sincerely hoping that you are either stupid or do not know how government works. Nobody on this commission can sincerely say that this does not affect us when you guys are just now debating how we can use less money than we actually need to serve our community. The entire point of taxes is that we pool our money and put these shared funds towards the good of our community. Is that really what's happening here? Do your children have free pre-K because Israel has dropped bombs on children overseas? Is our healthcare now affordable because Israel has dropped bombs on hospitals? Has any of our rents come down because Palestinian homes were destroyed with our money? Are our elders able to afford their pills because a genocide is happening? Well over $500 million of our tax money has been sent to Israel since October 7th, and the federal government will not fund our city properly. Because that is our money, that is our genocide. Every time it rains, sewage backwashes onto the streets in Athens, and this commission knows about it. The federal government knows about it because we have asked for state funds and federal funds and are told there is no money for that. But Israel gets $500 million of our tax money. Not only do they get money for war, they get money for free healthcare and free college for all of their citizens. Our commissioners cannot tell us when they're looking for our votes that they can make the difference in our everyday lives. And then when we are asking them to make that very same difference by amplifying our voices, they say that they are too insignificant to matter. Do not let anyone tell you that a ceasefire resolution out of Athens will not be heard when mayors and commissioners are having meetings with the same representatives and senators voting to send our money overseas. By not supporting the ceasefire resolution, it is an active choice specific commissioners are making to allow our tax dollars to be wasted on the federal level instead of at least trying to make a statement on behalf of Athens. They are making this choice actively, so please do them the honor of holding them to account for these active choices. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli.
Good evening.
Hey, I'm Jack. I'm a District, sorry, John, District 7 resident. I've heard a number of commissioners now say through private emails up here in various different means, the several meetings that we've had with commissioners, that genocide just isn't a local issue. Earlier, we heard someone from the Caterpillar manufacturing plant in Athens come up and speak. Caterpillar has openly cooperated with the Israeli military, continuing to sell the D9 bulldozer to Israel despite knowing that they would be modified with heavy armor and used in war crimes like bulldozing Palestinian homes and running over innocent Palestinians. You may remember the death of Rachel Corey, who was an American activist who went over to protest the fact Israel's oppression of Palestinians. She was run over by a Caterpillar bulldozer. These issues are very intimately connected. They're manufactured in Athens and then sent over to Israel. So yes, it is a local issue. It is something that we should be focusing on. It's really frustrating hearing people talk about things like democracy, social responsibility, and integrity seemingly in a vacuum while acting in a manner that directly betrays all of those values. The same people lamenting how gun violence takes the lives of innocent children in our community voted to increase pay for ACCPD and have also refused to condemn Israel's killing of countless children. More children have been killed in the war on Gaza just in the past 242 days than all conflicts for the past five years combined. And that was done with our money. So to see people for seven, now eight months, actually just genuinely say, like, essentially, I don't care. We hear you, but we don't care. And then to come up and say, we represent the community. We really listen. We really care. There's a disconnect here. And it's the exact same disconnect that exists when we're talking about Israel and saying it's not a local issue despite the fact that we all know that it is a local issue. So I just want all of you to know that people will remember, the same way that we look back at like German civilians during World War II and say, like, how could they have let that happen? That is how you will be looked back upon because you have a choice now to say that Athens either stands with Israel's genocide and with America's complicity in Israel's genocide, or against it. I know that I, as an Athens resident, am against genocide, but right now, your actions, the actions of this commission, have said that Athens supports genocide. Atlanta has passed a ceasefire resolution. We even read the ceasefire resolution that has been emailed to a number of you. Kelly Gertz literally could put that on the board, could have passed it October 7th. This is a deliberate and willing attempt to support genocide. And I want you to know that we will remember. And I hope that, yeah, I hope that that haunts you. I really genuinely hope that every video you see makes you remember that you're complicit in this, just like we are.
Thank you for coming tonight, Jack.
We all have blood on our hands.
Good evening.
Good evening. Teresa Omonovich, 320 East Clayton Street, Suite 436. I was coming in tonight. I wanted to speak on the funding, the ARP funding. When the funding first came down, I had spoke about it and gave you guys a Policy Link article, 10 Priorities on Advancing Racial Equity Through the American Rescue Act, A God for City and County Policymakers. And I just wanted to come back up and reiterate how important the funding is to achieve Executive Order 13985, Executive Order 14050, and Executive Order, Executive Order 14901. Those policies are, executive orders are all Biden's, executive orders on making sure this funding is there to support the underserved community. And although I think you guys have done a great job so far with the programming that you have funded, there's still more to be done. And I'm reaching out and asking that you all look at every program that's presented for funding for this equity piece. There's been a lot mentioned here tonight. The chamber and the submission that they did, I really don't think the process in which they went about it was an equitable process. And then the issue of the two different workforce development task force. But what's been lost in a lot of this is the fact there's been no mention of economic development. You passed a business inclusion policy tonight that's based on a city that may not be the same demographic makeup as Athens, but it isn't, it's a start, right? It's a start for that. But I'm hoping that as the next six months go on, and this funding has to be allocated, appropriated, and out the door, that the programs that you do fund will benefit the communities in which the funding was appropriated for. So that's all. And then I did want to tell you, Commissioner Fisher, you did ask at the last public budget meeting for data on what nonprofits are doing. So I did want to let you know, you did request that information. So data is important in order to know what programs are working and the continuing funding. But I would support that you guys really pay attention to what you're funding and really help the organizations that are doing the grassroots work. They need to be supported in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Omonovich. Good evening.
Good evening. Dylan Woolsey, 395 Road. Thank you for passing that budget very quickly. Another thing to know is, I think relatively soon, the planning, every so often, Athens goes through planning, zoning, and this is going to be up for review very soon. I really hope you, for zoning, you make it a lot more accessible, for a lot more things to be built on less, I guess, more restrictive zoning parcels. We saw earlier today in this meeting, for example, like for the halfway house that was being proposed, they need to do a lot of bureaucratic, a lot of bureaucratic paperwork and a lot of meeting stuff to just do what the owner wants to do with the property. So I hope that through the new zoning plan, you allow more permissibility of what people can do with their own property. And this will just allow more freedom, more variety in Athens and neighborhoods, which I don't think will necessarily destroy the character of any individual neighborhood having a few different types of houses in this single neighborhood, as well as allowing more housing through updating or resending policies and more types of housing being able to be built will help us to ensure that the funding we're putting forward for a favorable housing plan is as effective as possible, and we can build as much housing to meet the housing needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sorry to keep you all so late. And good evening, Mayor Gertz. Todd Lovett, again from 380 Maybach Forest Drive. After listening, once again, I'm here to, I just wanted to give my sentiment on a few things. I think the privilege and the entitlement that I've witnessed in some of the submissions tonight really highlights a huge gap. You know, we have students who are able to come and speak freely, communicate effectively, and one thing I see lacking is people such as the youth from the Athenian, the Athenian community, Athens, black Athenians specifically. And I wonder why that is. I read a report about the low literacy rates, and I think there's a huge opportunity because there's something called the Mitchell Effect or the Michael Effect, where low literacy rates are closely related or directly correlated to prison and other unforeseen outcomes, you know, such as death and everything like that. Now, in Athens, we do know that there is a, you know, there is a low literacy rate problem. And I do think that there should be some primary focus or prioritized focus on programs such as what was mentioned earlier on economics and equity. I know there's a few programs, there's several programs and state-level programs that are being offered, and I think those need to be looked at and taken advantage of. Because when I see, you know, UGA that produced these outspoken students and right here in Athens, and then I look at the actual neighborhood in Athens, and I see that there's a huge disparity, I'm wondering why is that not being viewed for so many decades, right? Why aren't these people here speaking from the actual community that's being impacted by every single ordinance, every single policy that's been used or mentioned here today and the other time? So I just wanted to be someone to actually double down on what either has or has not been said today, but has been said prior, that we need to start looking at the people in our community because they are our future, these children. They are either going to be you one day, or they're not. And I think that we would want most of these kids and teenagers and youth to have a clean process that goes straight to something that's productive as participants in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else here to speak to us this evening on any item that was not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and have a very brief commission comments. We'll begin with Commissioner Hamby and end with Commissioner Davenport, who will adjourn us.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the voters in District 8 for re-electing me and thank my opponent, who's still here very late, who we worked together. We treated each other so diplomatically and will continue to do so. And I will make a And I will make this just promise to continue to work hard for the best for the East Side, for District 8, and for the whole community, and to sort of respect the staff that we have here, work with them, and work with the people who are coming to speak and share their concerns and views. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Blaine for your service to our community. You'll be sorely missed.
A few things. When I was thanking people earlier, I left out the clerks, and I can't express enough that the team of two in our clerk's office has also played an integral role in getting a whole bunch of things over the finish line, as we sent many things in revised version and revised version again after the deadline. So thank you, Clerks Bratton and Ms. Armstrong. I always appreciate the folks who stick around this late to speak to us, and I feel compelled therefore to respond in brief. Appreciate learning a new term tonight. The Matthew Effect, I think it's called, is an interesting, is a good term to capture a phenomenon I think we're aware of that would take some, we should look at more. And I continue to hope that colleagues will support placing a resolution regarding Palestine on our agenda. I'm very glad that we passed the resolution tonight about violence locally, and I understand why that was an important thing to do first as a local government, but now that we've done that, I hope we might also take that step. And I just wanted to conclude with three formal requests because I think this is kind of the way we do it, absent another defined process of the mayor. So one is to, you've heard a couple of, you've heard these before, I think, but I want us to examine our single-family regulations in our code, to consider exempting homestead properties and/or increasing the number of unrelated people allowed. I think this is the lowest hanging fruit for us with regard to affordable housing. The moment we pass something, it opens up existing housing with existing vacant rooms for people to live in, and if we can do it for short-term rentals, I'd like to think we could do it for long-term residents. I would also request that the mayor sign to the Planning Commission or one of our committees, examining our zoning code, to consider removing gas stations from being allowed by right in any zoning categories, or at least in any residential zoning categories and parcels within a certain specified distance of them. I think there's well-documented public health and environmental concerns with regard to those long-term, as well as a huge impact on how that land can be used later. And so I think we've got enough gas stations, we can be thoughtful about maybe some kind of special permit for any new ones that need to come. And then finally, just reiterating what came earlier, but in this maybe more formal conclusion, to consider assigning either the Planning Commission or one of our committees revising our code with regard to halfway houses to allow them in all zones that also allow residential uses. Thanks.
Thank you. I want to thank my colleagues for working on the budget this year and get some things done. And I'm sincere, though, as we move forward, as we look at our nonprofits, I think it's critical that we got to look at the nonprofits that are doing the work, how they're spending their money, what's their outcome, and what's the data, and how they're serving our community. So that's, I mean, moving forward, look at those things. Our upper money will be running out 2026, so we got to start looking at how we're going to tighten our belts and how we're really going to make sure our taxpayers, make sure that we're responsible for spending those tax dollars. The Hot Corner Festival is going on this weekend. Hope to see all my colleagues in downtown. That area is a historical area where black commerce had went on for years, and so I hope to see all you all this Saturday. And I want to thank my two colleagues, Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Taylor for doing the resolution. We did talk about this, and we had some conversations, and again, too many of our, especially our young black males are dying in these streets, and it's incumbent upon us to try to do something about that. And when you got a 16-year-old that's killing a 20-year-old, you know, that's sad. And so we got to do more as a community. And really, I'm going to be honest with you, if I had to, and this may rub some people the wrong way, but those young black boys that are dying, it's really incumbent upon the black community to make sure these things don't happen. You know, we got to take, we got to take back our community and it's vital that we do that, and we need to start doing that now. So hopefully, I hope people will read that resolution because it talks about how many gangs that we got here, and we really got to start doing something to cut down on the killing that's going on in our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you to everyone who stayed till 11 o'clock.
I just want to say thanks to my constituents for electing me again, my fifth election. It doesn't get any easier. And I want to say thank you to Blaine again. You know, I often say that I've been behind the rail now for almost 10 years, and I often say that the first couple of years were like treading water. But since Blaine achieved the managership and Mayor Gertz came on, we've actually gotten a lot done. And, you know, Mayor Williams has listed a lot of that, and I'm really proud of a lot of those accomplishments, and I'm thankful for the things we've gotten done at my urging. You know, he actually listened and got creative and, you know, brought some real positive change to the constituents that I represented, so I'm grateful for that. And as we break, take a break for the next month or so, I hope we can all catch our breath and reflect, reflect on ourselves and reflect on what's going on out in the world and what's going on in this nation and how it does bear on this community, and what we can do to make things better in that world and in this community. You know, these are really perilous times, and we are in some position of power to make a change, or at least to fight back against some of those forces. So I hope we can all gather some courage and do that.
Happy Father's Day to all the fathers. Happy Juneteenth. Hot Corner this weekend, we got Asfest at the end of the month, July 4th. The fireworks will be at Southeast Clark Park. Thank you, Manager Blaine. Much love for you and God bless you on your journey. And thank my colleagues for their tireless work on the budget. Thank y'all. It's done. Take a break, vacation, but to our constituents, we'll still be working, and motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Davenport and a second from Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we stand adjourned. Everybody have a wonderful evening.